I'm not hearing anything. Is anybody hearing me?
The September 11th Des Moines City Council meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Harris will now lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's a notable day and I think I'd like to take a couple of moments at the beginning of the meeting for reflection. Of course, there's some people that we might even work with these days that were not even born when 9/11 happened, but it still was a pretty sobering day for this nation. And we've had several sobering days since. Yesterday was one of those and there continues to be violence in our country and on our shores. So just a couple moments of silence and remembrance. Thank you. Well, thank you all for coming out tonight. Appreciate the packed house. We have some celebratory moments coming up in a few minutes and I appreciate you all being here. For those of you that are watching online or on Channel 21, as you probably know, we cannot respond to our phones up here at the dais, so if you do experience any technical problems, please email cityclerk@desmoineswa.gov. Let the record show that all council members are present and that Councilmember Nutting and Deputy Mayor Steinmetz will both be attending remotely this evening. First up on the agenda, we do have a proclamation tonight and excited to do this, so I'm going to turn the proceedings over to Councilmember Oxiger for an overview.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt the proclamation recognizing September 21st, 2025 as Mount Rainier Pool Day.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Grace Matsui for the second discussion. Would you like to make some comments about it or talk about?
Sure. You know, the pool has been in existence since 1975 and it served just, you know, innumerable number of citizens and kids learning how to swim in particular. And I'm also reminded of this time 16 years ago was when the city's proposition was on the ballot to form the Des Moines Pool Metropolitan Park District so that we could assure that the pool would continue in existence. We took a little bit different tact at that campaign. We called it reverse trick-or-treating because as the kids would go to people's houses and ask them, mind you, this was at the height of the Great Recession. Nobody was interested in raising taxes for anything, but the kids went out and they were handing out lifesavers. So we called it reverse trick-or-treating. And they went out and they were, you know, the greatest proponents we had to let us, to let the public know how important that pool is. And it continues to exist today. On the 21st is going to be the 50th anniversary rededication of the pool. It was a forward thrust pool. The Forward Thrust Movement began in 1968 and it built 16 pools around the county. And this is what, there's a handful of them that still remain and we have one of them and I think it is a treasure to the community. And so, at what point do you want me to read the proclamation?
Well, I'm going to give anybody else an opportunity for input or comments before we vote.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment they would like to add to this tonight celebration? Okay, Councilmember Harris.
Sure. You know, my, I guess the biggest thing I would say about the pool is that it should be utilized more fully. It is a tremendous resource and it's down the street from Mount Rainier High and I don't know, the challenge I've had since with my own kids and stuff is just making more people aware that it is where it is and getting them to it. So it's this wonderful thing, but I don't know how you do it, but yeah, anything we can do to draw more people to the spot and have it more fully utilized. I'm always open to ideas and thank you so much for your involvement with it. These things do not happen by themselves.
Thank you. Well, I'm thankful for the pool. I've got a soft spot in my heart. Couple of my kids learned to swim there. So appreciate it being here in the community and available in the wintertime when you can't swim outside. So really appreciate it. All right, without further ado, let's take it to a vote.
I had my hand up.
Oh, you did? Oh, there it is. Thank you. Up in the corner. Sorry, Harry. Go ahead. Excuse me, Deputy Mayor.
I feel Councilmember Nutting's pain sometimes about not being noticed. Anyway, I just, you know, as many of you know, I've raised two boys here in this community and I'm pretty sure the Mount Rainier Pool was the first time they ever really got in the water. And we have some good memories. And I do want to thank Councilmember Oxiger for his advocacy and his support of the pool. They have a great champion in him. So I think this recognition is well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so without further ado, I'm looking, don't see any further hands. We have a motion on the table and discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's like, it's a seven zero, so motion passes. So now we go to the proclamation. Councilmember Oxiger, we'll read the proclamation for us tonight.
All right, thank you. Whereas, Mount Rainier Pool opened its stories in 1975 and has faithfully served the residents of Des Moines and the surrounding communities for 50 years. And whereas, it is estimated that more than 25,000 children have learned to swim at the Mount Rainier Pool, gaining lifesaving skills and fostering a culture of water safety. And whereas, the Mount Rainier Pool has provided opportunities for youth and adults to compete successfully in swimming at the high school, collegiate, and even Olympics levels, bringing pride and recognition to our community. And whereas, countless young people have been prepared for careers as flight attendants, first responders, members of the military, and other professions that require strong swimming ability and water safety knowledge. And whereas, the Mount Rainier Pool operated by the Des Moines Pool Metropolitan Park District continues to be a vital community asset promoting health, fitness, safety, and fellowship. And whereas, on Sunday, September 21st, 2025, the community will come together from noon to 3:00 PM to celebrate the Mount Rainier Pool's 50 years of dedicated service. Now, therefore, the Des Moines City Council does hereby proclaim September 21st, 2025, as Mount Rainier Pool Day in the city of Des Moines and encourages all residents to join in recognizing the invaluable contributions of the Mount Rainier Pool to health, safety, and the well-being of our community. Signed this 11th day of September, 2025, Mayor Buxton.
Thank you. So now we'll have a little photo opportunity here. Come up to the front. You're presenting the pool. Gene, I think you're going to receive this tonight. Excuse me, Councilmember Oxiger. Yeah, on behalf of the pool? Oh, all right. Come on. There we go. Okay, that was fun. Do we have any correspondence not previously received by council?
No, Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, now it's time for comments from the public. We do have a new feature. Our council meetings are now available to, you can participate via Zoom and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But however, for the public comment portion of the meeting, participants will need to make arrangements ahead of time if you want to participate in public comment using Zoom. So I don't think we have anybody that made those arrangements. Also, tonight, we are going to have a public hearing in regard to our comp plan. So if you have any comments with regard to the comp plan portion of the meeting in the public hearing, please hold your comments until that time so that your comments can be part of the public record. Just another reminder, it is campaign season, so we won't be able to hear or receive any comments that could be construed as supporting a candidate in the race. So when you come forward, please keep your comments respectful. You'll have three minutes to speak. Just state your name and your city of residence when you come forward. We do have a couple of people who have signed in. Stephen Larson, come on up.
My name is Stephen Larson. I live in the city of Des Moines. Thank you. Have a comment about short-term rentals. While I commend the council for their investigation on drafting restrictions for short-term rentals, I sincerely ask that the council gives serious consideration to not allowing short-term rentals, Airbnb, in our residential neighborhoods. My wife and I live in Des Moines and have for decades. We've raised our family here. All our neighbors either own their homes or are long-term renters. This brings a measure of stability and accountability as there is a vested interest in the quality of life and a sense of community. Allowing short-term rentals in a residential neighborhood opens the door to significant and demonstrated risk for increased rents, housing shortages, as well as adversely impacting noise, safety, traffic, and overall quality of life. Just a short web search will reveal the many municipalities that have suffered from allowing short-term rentals, Airbnb, et cetera, into their neighborhoods and also shows their attempts at corrective actions after suffering from the problems short-term rentals have brought. Let's learn from their mistakes and be proactive in avoiding making our own here in Des Moines by not allowing the renting of residential houses on a short-term basis. Homeowners have other ways to generate income such as the obvious long-term rentals. On a personal note, my wife and I live on a private but unmarked road. It's a narrow road across from and only one house away from owners who are considering turning their house into a short-term rental. This house is located on the corner of a public road and a private road. A significant portion of their onsite parking is only accessible by this narrow, private road. Allowing that horse, excuse me, that house to become an Airbnb will dramatically increase traffic in a currently quiet neighborhood with families with small children. Again, I sincerely ask that the council give serious consideration to not allow short-term rentals in our residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Scott DeShane.
All right. Sorry. I love the ducks. You know, I just want to come and formally invite you. You're a parent organization. I represent the Mount Rainier Pool. It's up by the high school, if anybody needs to know. Sorry. But, and we just filled up swim lessons almost the first night and we still have a ton of wait lists because we have the same amount of water space that we had back in, you know, 1975. So we do have some challenges, but I do want to invite you to our 50th anniversary event. It'll be on September 21st formally. If you raise your hand, I'll go back. You don't have to send me a letter that you want to come. Just I'll RSVP you. But I just want to personally invite you. I just want to thank the city too for all the work that you've done over the years helping us get the district forum with repairs, with support on, you know, you provide our health insurance. So thank you for that, being a partner. And then we just wish the AWCR MSA, which is very nice because that actually saves the district about $15,000 a year. So thank you. The event will be on Sunday, September 21st. I have flyers if anybody in the audience wants them. Again, it'll be at noon for the dedication, so you have plenty of time to get home for the Seahawks game. You guys can consider it tailgating if you want. Something, I'm from the Midwest, so that's something that we're proud of. We do have VI P parking for you, so if you want parking, we'll have staff available to help you with that. They won't park it for you, but they'll show you where to park because they're only like 15 years old, a lot of them. You know, and we would love to have the city be a keynote speaker, like the city manager, if you'd love to come up and talk, present your proclamation and just hopefully have some good socialization. Other keynotes will be, we're hoping to get somebody from the James Ellis Foundation. It's the mountain to the soundways. We're going to proclaim the second Saturday of each month from now on as James Ellis Day. James Ellis was the father of the Forward Thrust Movement, which he helped get the, you know, parts of the airport built, which I know has got a little controversial, but he also, you know, I think Bettina Carey was here last week where she talked about the Forward Thrust Light Rail project that would have saved us like $4 billion now and would have been a lot cheaper for concrete for pool repairs. And then we're going to unveil a plaque honoring five decades of swimming at the pool or a half century, which is incredible. Most pools are supposed to last 25 to 40 years, but with your guys' help, we've been able to extend that. And then we'll have a free community swim, which will be part of the Ellis Swim from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock. So if any of you want to bring your family members or just come in yourself, feel free to come in from 1:00 to 3:00. And then I'm going to read the thing I wrote. The event honors five decades of service, water safety, and recreation in South King County. Your presence will help us celebrate our past and inspire the next generation of aquatic access and community health. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. So is there anyone who came tonight who expected to speak or wanted to speak and did not realize you needed to sign in in order to do so? Can we allow that now? All right. So next up is a time for regional committee reports. Right now, the council is not operating in our traditional committee format. We are operating with a committee of the whole, which means we don't really have chairs, committee chairs, but several council members do serve regionally at regional tables and this is an opportunity for them to talk a little bit about anything at those tables that would be of interest to our citizens right here directly in the city of Des Moines. So do any council members have a report out from a regional table? Okay, we'll go with Councilmember Harris and the Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, just really quick. I attended the last EMAC Emergency Management Advisory Committee meeting and the emergency manager in federal way wanted to extend an invitation to the city manager and Public Works. He grew up in Redondo and is well aware of king tides and flooding and that sort of thing and wanted to make sure that you had his number on speed dial just in case. Great guy and I will forward his contact information. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yes, last night I attended with Mayor Buxton the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee meeting. It was up in Mercer Island. They were a host. We had a tour of the new Mercer Island metro transit station, the light rail station that's kind of going in up there. It was very impressive. And then during the meeting, we discussed a number of things, including the King County Library System. They're going to be asking for a Levee lid lift in 2026 and went through several different scenarios and we were able to give them some feedback on that, which was nice to be asked for Sound Cities to give some feedback before the plan was just simply presented to us. So I think that, you know, Sound Cities Association is becoming a lot more influential because of that. They're coming to us for input. Secondly, is that the King County Transit District is also looking at a number of issues that were coming up and we had a report on that from Robert Feldstein. There seems to be quite a bit of discussion going on and that's a good thing again because they are asking the cities in King County for input before they're actually making their plans. The next item agenda was the new indigent defense caseload standards. SCA had a draft letter that most people were approving of. We gave some feedback on that. And then we transitioned into the early feedback on the legislative agenda, on a county legislative agenda that I think SCA is going to develop because, you know, there's a lot going on in this county and we need to have some input on that. So, but it was generally a very good meeting, very positive, lots of good energy in the room. And I can honestly say that SCA is becoming a much more dynamic organization under the new leadership that we have. That's my report.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So, okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the city manager's report. And I'll hand it over to City Manager Catherine Cafrey.
Thank you, Mayor. We want to start with recognizing the Legacy Foundation for a couple of projects. I don't know if AJ wants to head on up, but will you pull up the slide with the skate park, Tara? So we've got two projects. We want to recognize the Legacy Foundation and several of them are here, including the president, Patrice Thorell. Over the summer, I guess at the beginning, Fred reached out to us, local artist Fred Andrews, and said, "We think your skateboard park could use a little TLC." So will you go to the next slide, Tara? And it's right across the street from City Hall, so it's hard to miss. But he said, "We want to paint murals." And I think Fred, you said, "We have like street artists." And I was like, "I don't know about street artists. You're making me nervous." But it couldn't have turned out any better. It's been a huge improvement. I see kids over there all the time. So in the center, you can see we've got kind of a Mount Rainier as well as all sorts of other murals. There's also some on the backside. It's really spruced up the park. So a tremendous amount of gratitude from the city to you all for doing that. And then our Assistant City Manager, AJ, is going to talk a little bit about a project that was done in conjunction with Legacy at Midway Park. And then we have a little something to thank Legacy.
So good evening. My name is AJ Johnson-Newton. I am the Assistant City Manager. I'm here to talk about a generous donation that the Legacy Foundation gave us this year of $10,000 that allowed the Community Enrichment Services Department to stand up a mobile recreation program at Midway Park. Because of that support, we were able to provide consistent, safe, and fun activities for kids who might not otherwise have had those activities available to them. On average, we had about 15 kids per day with lots of days. We've seen a lot more kids, which was really good news. Many of them started coming to the park for the food bank's free lunch, but once that they saw that we had activities and really adults and people who cared about them, they're interested in them and having some safe and fun times, they came back. So we considered a major, major success. One of the best parts of the summer was really watching the relationship between the kids and the staff grow. We were intentional about hiring dedicated staff for this role. And so initially, they reported that the kids were kind of hesitant to interact. And we were lucky enough, we hired Suzanne and Ellis. And I remember the first day I met Ellis, I happened to be over at Camp Chaos and he came in and he introduced himself to me and he said, to Savannah, he said, "You know, I was thinking yesterday, what can we do to get the kids involved?" Like I was thinking about it all night and I have all these ideas. And I was like, yes, we hired the right person. And I will say that they shared with us that on the last day, the kids promised, made them promise, will be back. So we want to thank Legacy for their generous donation. It was a great success and we hope to be able to do more of that next year. So thank you very much.
AJ made a terrific slide that we can't seem to find right now, but it was really great. Patrice and whoever's here from Legacy, if you want to come up real quick.
We tried to do something creative, so we had a custom skidboard for a model of wheels. That's the wording, but I'll read it. It says, "In appreciation and recognition of your dedication to enhancing our community skateboard park through collaboration with local artists, the mural improvements bring new vibrancy to the park, inspire creativity, and foster community pride. Your commitment to enriching Des Moines through art, service, and generosity will leave a lasting legacy for generations to come." So with sincere gratitude. So you can add the wheels on if you want. So you can add the wheels on if you want.
Oh, my goodness.
Check that out. Don't mess it up. Yeah. Do you want to say anything?
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's shredded. That is so cool.
Can I say something?
Yeah, yeah, please. Please.
So I was on the, my name's Benji Pearson. And I was on the Arts Commission here for a couple of years. I'm from Norde Park. I'm from here. I've skated at that park since I was a kid. I maxed that park out. Could do everything there. But it's been burning in my, burning in my brain for a long time to get that done. I got on the Arts Commission, that specific commission to do that. Unfortunately, it couldn't happen through that, so within, I would say, two weeks of contacting Legacy, that was, the ball was rolling. They had posters made, they had it taped off, they had people. It's something to have when you have people making phone calls on your behalf. There's something validating about it. It's really inspiring to me. You see the humanity a lot in the community, so that's important. And I just want to say thank you to you guys, because that was huge for me to get that done, because the kids will see that every single day, and that'll seep in every single day, and they'll subconsciously, like, you know, the imagination would be provoked through that. So I think that's a good start for this, for this community, get those kids, you know, thinking and, you know, outside the box a little bit more. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrice Thoreau, Des Moines Legacy Foundation, and I just want to say what a pleasure it is to work with the city of Des Moines again. We love our city, we love our low end, all of our children. We love all of our children, especially those kids that have been a little bit neglected up in the Pacific Ridge area, Midway Park area. And so with this project, with the Waterland Children's Festival, and with the Midway Project, I think that we've had the most wonderful partnership going on with the city. Then I just want to thank you all for that opportunity, and we're just going to keep on rolling together, I hope. Thank you.
I also forgot to mention that our own city attorney also used to skate at the skate park in Des Moines, so you might want to go back out there, too. Okay. That's all we have on this item. Our next item is the second quarter financial report. So Jeff does not have any skateboards. He has charts, but those are still just as fun.
I was a wannabe skater back when I was young. I'm not coordinated. Anyway, Jeff Friend, Finance Director, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council, members of the community. This is going to be a financial update covering the first six months of the year. And to start off with, we want to have some, what we call headlines, just really the major takeaways from the first half of 2025. And to begin with, we would start with the new square footage tax that we implemented this year. And as the slide says, revenues are lower than expected as the new tax phases end. The budget did not anticipate this period. It turns out, people don't get too excited about a new tax and line up to pay it. So the work required for implementing this tax has been more than we expected. So the, the tax was adopted by council in December, and it is paid quarterly. And BNO taxpayers, when they pay taxes to the city, well, first of all, it is a self-reporting system, so just like how we self-report to the IRS, our federal taxes, businesses in Des Moines take it upon themselves to report their returns to the city. And they do so primarily through a portal called File Local, which is owned by various local cities in the area. Seattle, Tacoma, Bellevue, Kent are involved. The state requires we either use that or use the state. We use that portal. So the tax was adopted in December, and one of the things we had to do was change our tax form in File Local for people to be able to submit theirs in compliance with the code. File Local doesn't make changes very fast, so we had to basically accept that that change would be available for the second quarter, not the first. So for people filing their returns in the first quarter of the year, they had the old form. So therefore, we knew we had a challenge there. Just systematically, in March, we sent letters out to businesses, you know, informing them of the new tax. We also followed up with, by email to businesses as well. And being a quarterly tax, the first quarter tax would be due after the first quarter's done, so in April. So April came and went, and we had collected about $30,000 in square footage tax, and we had budgeted about $840,000 for the year. So divided by four, that's about $210,000 budgeted for that period of time, and we collected about 30. So that wasn't great. So we knew we had work to do. So letters were sent out again to businesses, because the situation we had is, what we want is we want businesses to be in compliance with the code. And what they need to do when they file their returns is they need to report their sales, they need to report their square footage, and they need to pay the higher amount. So there's three groups. We discovered, we have the businesses that filed their sales without reporting their square footage. We had businesses that reported square footage and didn't give us their sales, and then we had businesses that didn't report at all. So starting in April, May, we started reaching out to the business community with letters targeted at those three groups. And in the second quarter, we had the form updated finally on File Local. So in July, after the second quarter, so this isn't in this report, we collected $73,000. So we moved in the right direction. We had eight businesses, the first quarter, report and reported 30, you know, we collected 30,000. We had 14 businesses in the second quarter paying about $73,000. So it's still substantially less than budget, but we are working on it and possibly even looking at a company that can maybe audit this and help us collect. So it hasn't been treated lightly. We've also focused on delinquent BNO taxpayers. We've, you know, reported, you know, one business to the state. We have another business that's on a payment plan who hadn't paid their BNO taxes for quite some time. So we are working hard on resolving this issue, and that's also, you know, why it's the number one headline up there, because it's really our main concern of everything in, this happened with the general fund the first six months. This is really probably the core issue. Coming up, next, total operating income was $40,408. So despite the downfall with the square footage tax, we still were on the positive side of the ledger. And ending cash balance is almost about $2.1 million, which is about 8.2% of our annual operating expenses, and we'll talk about that a bit more in a slide coming up. A couple other items coming soon. You'll see a lot more of me the rest of the year. We have our biennial budget amendments for our '25 and '26 biennial budget. I'll be here in October to discuss that process with council, so that people know what to expect. We are currently working on the capital improvements plan, and also will soon be working on the property tax levy for next year. September is usually when King County starts sending us information, where we can start working on that. Currently, also, we have our annual audit from the state auditors going on right now as well. So look at general fund revenue. Total revenue was about 4% under budget. As you can see on the taxes, it is about $535,000 under budget. About half of that is the square footage tax being under budget. A portion of that is our regular BNO tax being under budget. That one actually was just over budgeted. One-time sales tax was also under budget. We have anticipated a number of projects coming through. Those are starting to come through. There's construction companies that do construction projects in the city that are valued over $15 million pay this one, their sales tax, we count it as one-time tax. Those projects are happening, they're just happening a bit later than we expected. So the colors on the right in the schedule, green means that they're going the right direction, yellow means they're 0% to 4% in the wrong direction, and red, of course, is 5% or over 5% in the wrong direction. So overall, we're in that yellow area, where we're down at 4% compared to budget, but not red yet, maybe third quarter, but not yet. General fund expenditures, those are just 1% total over budget. Personnel was mostly over budget by about $240,000, and those costs mainly relate to costs related to some employees that were terminated and are no longer with the city, because there's related cash outs related to that. But 1% over budget, so that's encouraging that overall costs are being contained. In regards to cash, our operating cash reserves were about $2.1 million at June 30th. Our minimum threshold is 16.67%. We're at 8.2%, which is about half of where we need to be in cash reserves. So if something terrible happened to the city, what you would like to have is enough cash to cover two months of operating expenses. We have enough cash to cover one month of operating expenses. And speaking of the audits, earlier today, our state auditor let us know that we will have what they call an exit comment, which is, it's not a finding, which is worse, but it's an exit comment stating that they have concerns about the financial condition of the city. Leaving the general fund, the Marina, their total revenue is about $2.5 million. You notice the fuel sales there is quite a bit under budget. However, if you look at the expenditures on the next slide, you can see fuel purchases are also under budget by about the same amount. So we had about $480,000 of revenue. We had purchases of about $326,000. So it's really, you know, if it's under budget on both ends, it's not that much of a concern to us. So if you look at the expenditures for the Marina, you can see every category is about, is under budget, and operating income halfway through the year is about $795,000. So a little bit of a budget issue with the fuel, but not really a concern. Surface water management, and this is just, I want to point out that this is just the operating, so we're not looking at like the capital in non-operating projects and expenditures, but as far as just day-to-day operations, surface water management income is almost $1 million through the first half of the year. And questions?
Councilmember Harris and then Councilmember Mahoney.
Thanks, as always. I suppose this is part, you know, we'll get into this with the FCS, but why are franchise fees low? I mean, don't they tend to be stable, or is there some?
If they're low compared to budget, we'd probably budget it too high.
Can you give me an example of an intergovernmental expense? I'm just always, it's kind of vague, and so, just anything.
Yeah, the example I'd use is the police had a grant for body cameras, and so on the general fund statement, you can see that there, well, there's an expenditure for the body cams, and that would be intergovernmental, because it was funded by a grant.
And last but not least, regarding the warehouse tax, is there any way to know if our good friends in Kent and Auburn encountered similar challenges during their first year? I would assume that...
We did call them, and the person in Kent who handles their square footage tax wasn't there, because I think they started in 2013, so she wasn't there. Auburn, I didn't hear back from them, but I would assume it would be similar. I didn't get a clear answer from either city, but we did reach out.
No, it would just be comforting to know that basically everybody has these sort of, you know, opening collection things, and you don't have to get Biff and Rocco to, you know, show up.
We're close to getting Biff and Rocco, though.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
I don't want to disagree with anything Jeff said, but on the franchise fees, those tend to sometimes be seasonal, because water consumption, wastewater consumption changes throughout the year. So I think we should probably take a look to see if, since we're going through the end of June, we may not have hit the hotter months where you're going to see water usage go up. So we could look at that.
Yeah, there tends to not be a pattern with franchise fees through the years. They're sporadic, so.
I keep hearing this little thing from other cities saying that, you know, psychologically, we, this is for the other discussion, but we think of ourselves as a property tax-driven thing, but more and more, we're actually a fee-for-service kind of a biz, and, and so, you know, maybe I'm getting too into the weeds, but I'm just thinking about that. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
On the franchise fees, it's like the cable TV, the things that are in the telephone, landline-type telephone stuff, those are, as they pretty much will be almost nonexistent in the future. You continue to try to plan those down, but it looks like they're maybe shrinking faster than we anticipate is probably one of the reasons.
Yeah, well, I think there's, there's utility taxes, which are on like the telephone and, and the cable, and then there's also franchise fee agreements. But yeah, both areas are declining over time.
Just the future, I think. On square footage, what is the, what, remind me again, what was the total number of businesses you guys identified that qualified for paying this tax or at least being considered for?
If I recall, I think it would be around 27, but I can't, I don't know if that's accurate off the top of my head.
So it sounds like you had about 50% complying currently, or at least they know they need to comply.
Possibly, yeah. Like I said, I don't remember it off the top of my head, but I can check on that.
Can you kind of explain to me, you talked about the delinquency process, right? Obviously, you're notifying them, you're trying to work with folks, that kind of thing. What's, and you spoke about collection, is there other steps and additional steps to to retrieve these funds?
Yeah, the, I have the authority to audit their books, so that would be one avenue, is we can say, "We need to see your books," so I can see what your sales are, we can look at your square footage, and then we can make an assessment. We try to work with businesses before we get to that point, but that is probably one of the last steps.
Okay, thank you. And then, I don't know, maybe the Harbor Master, because I always like to put them on the spot. What's the decline in fuel sales about? I'm making them come up, too.
Kind of mean.
Scott Wilkins, Harbor Master, everybody. Give him a big round of applause.
No, I appreciate that.
I know you do.
Part of the, part of the reason, it's just been down all over. We'd reach out to all the different fuel stations on Puget Sound, and everybody's numbers are down. But as Jeff said, you know, our purchases kind of reflect the same, so we're pretty equal. And we also did have one month we were totally down when we had to clean all the fuel tanks and stuff, so took a whole month out of it right before summer.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Jeff, good presentation, as always. I appreciate that. I did particularly like your explanation of the offset in the fuel sales to fuel purchases and catching that connection, and that's why it might not be too worrisome, and I appreciate the Harbor Master's explanation and the fact that he's reached out to others and found it's not unique to Des Moines. So, you know, I do appreciate when those kinds of details... I, I did particularly like your explanation of the offset in the fuel sales to fuel purchases and catching that um connection. And that's why it might not be too worrisome and I appreciate um, uh, the harbor master's uh explanation and the fact that he's reached out to others and found it's not unique uh to Des Moines. So I, you know, I do appreciate when those kinds of details are, are put in front of us. Um, one thing that kind of jumped out to me in the general fund is that the supplies uh were really high, uh, much higher than anticipated. Do you know what's going on there?
Yeah, um, I made the report here. Primarily, it was those body cams that I just mentioned, um, so that was about seventy-seven thousand dollars and that wasn't budgeted. Uh, but it was also offset by that same exact amount of revenue from the grant. So we didn't pay for them, but we do recognize the expense and the revenue. And then when we do budget amendments, uh, in a few months, we will capture that, so that would be in the budget.
Okay, um, thanks, that's, that's a good explanation, good to know. Uh, the other question I have is regarding the square footage tax. Um, and I appreciate uh what you're telling us about that. And um, I just want to know that there's some reassurance, and I think the public would want to be reassured, that the, you are going to get caught up and that where businesses that didn't file in that first quarter aren't just granted a waiver because it wasn't on the form, correct?
Uh, correct, I think, I mean, in our, our discussions about it, um, some businesses might expect, and I don't know how many, but maybe a few think, oh, well, Des Moines is a small city, they don't have the resources to pursue this. Uh, but that'd be a mistake because we, we're not pursuing it because we, we do, we want the revenue, but we want businesses to be in compliance. And so we are like doubled our efforts to make sure that businesses are in compliance with the city code and doing their, you know, reporting their taxes uh as they should.
All right, so we can expect to, by the end of the year, get a substantial portion of what we anticipated in the revenue for that? Is that what I'm hearing?
Um, I would say that you should see growth. Um, I can't predict, it's a self-reporting system. So I'm hoping to get it up, but also for the twenty-six budget, we need to be realistic about the amount of revenue we're going to be pulling in with that tax.
Jeff, can you talk about the audit? You mentioned it earlier, but can you talk a little bit more about what we're looking at doing focused on this?
Oh, for the, um, yeah, so um, there are some companies that can assist us in that and help us grow that revenue. Um, that can do an audit. It's kind of like how we had a utility tax audit a few years ago. I think that was about four or five years ago, where they can, you know, it's, they can do the auditing for me and, you know, in, on my behalf as finance director and then, you know, assess how much tax the business should pay the city. So that would, having that tool would help enhance our revenue.
But those, those companies would need to be paid, so we would lose a percentage of what we'd otherwise collect, correct?
Yeah, if they, if they work on a commission, they might um collect a, a percentage, but we'd probably prefer to collect the funds that we do get than not collect them at all.
All right, well, thank you, very, very good explanation, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Grace Matzui.
Hate to call Scott back, but um, can you also explain a little bit more about, I mean, Councilmember Mahoney's comments are, are absolutely true that there is a future where we might have less cable TV. But to me, recreational boating and your cable TV are also things that could be a sign of belt tightening for just economic conditions. So I'm, I'm heartened, I guess, to hear that it's happening across the region, even though I think it's a worrisome uh signal. Do you have more um thoughts maybe about if there was a mixed use of commercial and recreational feel, uh, fuel users at the Marina that that might offset? Or would that decrease as well because there's not enough commercial uh boating going on?
I'll let the harbor master address that question.
Matt smiling. Uh, thank you. Uh, the, our Marina itself, mostly pleasure craft, as you know, we don't have a lot of commercial at all. The biggest commercial for us is the P'Alap tribes, they, they come to us for their gooey duck tracks and they fill up out of the Marina. Some of it went away this year because their tracks moved, so we lost some of that. Like I say, we were down for a month because of cleaning tanks. Um, recreational boating, we're still pretty strong on, everything like that is just one of those years. And we've had a good July, this was the first quarter, so we've had a good July and August to make up. So we're doing okay, thank you.
Also, in regards to the square footage tax, I also want to point out that the letters we've sent out originally are from finance. And then at, and starting about in July, we had letters from the city attorney's office go out. So we are increasing pressure. So I just wanted to point that out and acknowledge the work that they've done to help.
Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just have a comment on Deputy Mayor um Steinmetz's comments, I guess. Um, I, I would, I would say, I think the money upfront on the first year of collecting the square footage tax, even though it might be a loss to us, um, would make the businesses that are um, need to be compliant with this tax, um, be compliant in the future, so we wouldn't have to do the audit again.
Okay, Councilmember Harris.
Despite my um previous comment, I uh, I just do not, I, I like the measured tone. Um, it does take a while to change behavior and um, whether you like it or not. And so um, I understand we want the money and all of that stuff, but we also um, just, I'm, just do not want to go too heavy duty on this stuff. Um, and um, paying a collection agency probably is an, is an easy um decision. It is very time-consuming. Anyway, and the other thing is regarding the, the fuel sales. Um, they go up, they go down, and uh, I thi- it might be useful if the council could get like, at some point, just sort of like ten years of fuel sales. Because um, you know, yeah, you got good months, you got bad months and, you know, and I, I, that's just been my experience. So I just don't, just trends and so on, I, anyway, but thank you.
All right, thank you very much, great report, appreciate it.
We'll be having much more on finances in just a moment. But um, Bonnie Wilkins is going to briefly chat about how we're launching Zoom. Uh, you heard the mayor reference that at the beginning, but we just want to share that with the public so they know that there's, you know, one more way they can choose to participate in meetings or communicate with us. Bonnie?
Thank you, uh, good evening, mayor, council, staff, uh, people watching in the audience, people watching at home and on Zoom. Um, I'm Bonnie Wilkins, the Director of Administrative Services. And we have Zoom available now for people who, um, next, oh, I can do it, never mind, I got it. Um, who want to not come travel to City Hall, want to stay home and be in their comfy pants. Um, so you can stay there and watch, but you can still watch it the way we had it before via Zoom on our website. Either way will work. Um, it doesn't change our recordings, we still have them available after the meeting. Everything stays the same, the only thing we're adding is you're able to watch it from home. If you want to make a public comment, however, we are asking people to email the city clerk by Wednesday noon. This allows us time to get everything in place and gets, um, there's a lot goes on back here behind the scenes during the meeting. So it just allows the time for us to make sure that the, the people who want to make comment have the proper credentials to do so. Um, and then they can join the meeting and make their comment. And um, otherwise, it's just like that. And we, oh, I'm happy to say we have one person who's joined us today on Zoom, so that's great.
What do you mean by credentials? Proper credentials?
Proper credentials, the Zoom information, um, how do, you know, when to turn your microphone and your camera on, how to get called up, state your name, all the, the things that we ask for here. But just make sure that they're comfortable doing that, they know what to do, what to be expected, um, you know, so that cough guard.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Bonnie? Okay.
Thank you.
We did have questions, the harbor master, he's, we did call him again.
Okay, all right, that's it? All right, that's it for the city manager's report. Well, we have rearranged the agenda because we are hosting some guests in the room tonight and we're going to bring them up further on the agenda so they can participate right now. Uh, first order of new business is uh, is uh, the FCS group. Uh, they're giving us a report on a general fund forecast model and I'm going to turn that back over to the city manager for opening.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we've got Todd Chase and Tim Wood and Luke Nelson here tonight from FCS. Council may recall, this was a contract you all entered into several months ago. There's two parts to it. One is a general fund long-range forecast, because, you know, you just heard Jeff sort of talk about this moment in time with our city finances, but really, an important part of sort of our long-term fiscal health is having a really good assessment of where we are now, even when that is sometimes hard to hear. Um, so this is, I think, a really important foundation. We also wanted to get this work done prior to kicking off the strategic plan, which as you know, will be kicking off later this year. Um, because I think this is a really good base for us to have those bigger conversations about what the city's priorities are moving forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Todd, he's going to go through the general fund long-range forecast and then I think we'll pause for questions then. And then Tim will talk about the land use development model, which I anticipate some questions about as well. Todd?
Well, thank you. Um, I'm going to actually use my uh lieutenants here today to go through the two parts. But I want to first thank council and the city leadership for taking this project on. It's not a requirement for cities to hire independent uh financial advisors uh like us. Uh, but a lot of cities have been doing that and I think as a result, uh, it leads to a longer-term funding strategy or financial strategy for their cities that is more sustainable. Um, it can lead to better debt ratings, which can lower cost of uh interest on any bonds the city might, or debt that city might take on in the future, so. Um, but it also just gives you the peace of mind so you can sleep better at night, knowing that for the next several years, you're going to be okay um financially. So uh, what I'm going to do is uh, we've, we've broken this deep dive into the general fund into two parts. And the first part is focused on your existing general fund revenues and expenses and a forecast over the next six years, a baseline forecast, if you will, um, based on some of the assumptions that we've made, based on recent trends in some of the revenue sources and some of the expense items. And so um, I think our approach is intended to be fairly conservative in the sense that we're not trying to be overly optimistic on some of the revenues and we are trying to keep the expenses on, on the high end as what we would expect anyway for the next few years. Um, we have uh.
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, can, on the Zoom platform, can we put the slides as the main part of the platform? Um, it's so small, I can't see a thing that's on the slide right now.
Good quest. They're going to work on that.
Sorry, De- Deputy Mayor, um, the city clerk is telling me it's, she's got it as large as the screen will let her, but they are also in your packet.
Well, Councilmember Nutting and I are, at least on my screen, the two big screens and then there are two small screens up above. And there should be a way to correct that so that we're seeing the slides as the primary.
Okay, Tara's seeing what she can do.
I, I agree with you, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. I've, I've tried to correct it several times and every time I correct it on my screen, it gets fixed again to the fact that I can't see anything and all I see is your big head and my big head, so.
Thank you, that's perfect.
That's a little better. Hey, Luke? So Luke, uh, we'll go over the first part of the presentation, which is focused on the, the general fund. We've stuck with your current minimum fund balance target. Um, it's, you know, sixteen point seven percent or so, uh, two-year balance and, take it from there.
Okay, uh, so kind of moving forward, uh, what we'll be looking at, um, uh, we'll be kind of evaluating what the current budget looks like, uh, in the current budget year, identifying what those look like moving forward, um, and kind of supporting the budget process with this look forward. Um, one thing that we hope to achieve with this is achieving a structural balance uh between revenues and expenditures, meaning that um, permanent revenues are lining up with permanent uh expenditures, uh, like staffing or other things like that. Whereas programs or things that might not be permanent can be funded with grants. Um, so looking forward, uh, we have some assumptions here that are kind of driving what we're looking for as we move forward in time. Um, generally, uh, revenues are growing at about one and a half percent, um, with sales tax revenues being a little higher, um, and property taxes, of course, being limited at one percent um by statute. Um, in terms of expenditures, uh, labor expenditures and benefits, salaries, uh, those are at uh four percent and three percent respectively. And then we're forecasting for police especially at three and a half percent. In addition to that, uh, in the near term for sales tax revenues, we're kind of forecasting a little bit of a softening in the next year or two, um, before it picks back up at four percent growth after that. Uh, utility tax revenue, uh, we're forecasting three percent uh growth for electric, solid waste and natural gas um, and one percent growth in all others. And as mentioned, expenses are generally expected to uh increase by about four percent. So looking at where we are now uh with revenues, um, we can see that a major part of, most of the revenue is coming from par- property taxes and sales taxes, um, with the other portion being, major portion being from utility taxes. Um, these are the, the most stable revenues in general for a city. Um, and then kind of after that come the BNO taxes and business licenses. Um, so kind of looking at how that looks, uh, we have sales tax, property tax and utility tax, all between that twenty percent, twenty-five percent. They are, uh, property taxes are the most stable. Uh, you'll always be collecting basically that amount plus the one percent each year. Franchise fees and utility taxes get labeled mixed a little bit because franchise fees do get negotiated over time. But generally, uh, people are going to keep using utilities at the same rate. Kind of, as we move down, one thing to note at the bottom is charges for services. These are being labeled as less stable, um, because they are very dependent on how many people are signing up for services, what kind of services are being offered. Um, and they're also just not really meant to be revenue generating, they're more of a uh offsetting the cost of providing, so. In terms of expenditures, we've broken out the major expenditures by uh department. Um, the largest of which is public safety, taking up about half the budget. Um, in terms of that, uh, the next is parks and legal, um, and then kind of smaller as we go through. Um, so as we forecast those forward, uh, we see that going from twenty-four to twenty-five, we go up a little bit. We might go up a little bit more in twenty-six there. And then over time, those expenditures are growing by four, uh, by more than what we are projecting revenue to grow by. And it begins to decline over the next six years until about twenty-thirty, when we actually go negative. And so kind of the, the baseline forecast has escalated based on that twenty-twenty-five budget um, and any known adoption, or known changes since that was adopted. Uh, so that would include that square footage BNO tax uh issue that Jeff had mentioned earlier. And we're recommending that things, uh, that the city consider uh new revenue, revenue sources in the near term. Um, some of those options uh would be a property tax levy. That would require a vote of the people and uh kind of raise that capacity. Transportation benefit district. Transportation benefit districts could assess up to $50 car tabs, I believe you're at 440 right now. Utility taxes, there is a limit on how much you can increase all utility taxes, except for water and sewer, that can be increased without limit. Business and operations, I believe you are at the two, the point 2% that the council could do without a vote of the people. And then, the last one is, or kind of moving down, any sort of taxes on admissions or fees and fines should be kind of evaluated as you go there as well. Any questions?
Now, I just had, the last item on that option is the fees and fines, also includes impact fees, which you use for capital, not operations, but to the degree you do an audit of the police expenditures or parks expenditures, and you find that some of those general funds have been used for capital, you could justify an impact fee on new development for parks and for police capital improvements. So, that could be included. It's a little bit of a separate topic than the general fund, but it could be related in this case.
So, I did have a question. On the one chart there, we talked about the options. The second to the last slide, and the different options that you have. Assessment up to, in my packet here, it said $40 car tab or 0.1% sales tax, did that get changed?
Yes, I'm sorry, I think I'm realizing that we made corrections on Thursday, and an old version was put in our packet, so there's actually a couple places that we updated that were supposed to be in your packet.
Okay.
So, that is one, as well as the police assumptions on the contract. So, that is our error.
So, it is $50. I didn't realize, for whatever reason, that that had gone up, so, I think we're already collecting 40 right now, right?
Correct. So, when we show you all on the 25th, some revenue enhancing options, that will be one of the ones we suggest.
All right, thank you. That was all I had. Councilmember Harris?
You look familiar, maybe you presented in Burien, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, good, I just wanted to make sure, I have these, like, senior moments. The, so, one of the slides was about general fund revenue stability, and maybe this isn't the right discussion, but it looks vaguely like about 50% of our revenue is considered stable, and the other half is like, you know, mixed, or... That doesn't strike me as being, it doesn't kill me to have only half of your, so, I guess, to frame it as a question, are there any recommendations or comparatives with other cities as to how that mix works if we're healthy and growing strong in the future? I guess that's it, thanks.
Well, you know, again, you know, the franchise fees could be revisited, in terms of the taxes on the different utilities, perhaps water and sewer could be revisited. I think, I think you're already charging the maximum REIT belief, so that, you know, I think we're, you're pretty much doing everything you can do for most of the councilmatic options, so, yeah, other than the impact fees, which you might want to revisit.
Okay, I'm just, I mean, every city is... Every city is different, but I'm just, you know, I just keep thinking about back 300 years ago, when I moved here, and people would talk about, you know, 50, 60% of a bedroom community, right, would be property tax, and I'm just, that's, that apparently is no longer, I mean, that's the, that's the psychology that people have, and so, I honestly don't have a, in my mind, what that mix is, what the proper mix should be, is what I'm trying to say, because if you go to the people, and you, you know, they'll say, "utility tax is outrageous," or "property tax is outrageous," but we have to have a message that is, "this is the proper mix." I know your mind is back in 1992, but this is what a healthy city looks like, and so, it's, I'm just looking for some kind of recommendations on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to speak to that point really quickly. I don't think that there is a typical mix for cities, because, as you mentioned, they are very different. You know, because of state statute, property tax as a percentage of revenue generally declines over time unless a city is re-upping with a levy lid lift. But, you know, for some cities, especially like cities like Vancouver, for example, their utility tax portion is much higher than would be typical, because their sales tax is much lower, because it's right next to Oregon. You know, cities on the east side of the state, they don't charge BNO taxes at all, just as a, as a kind of cultural, you know, preference. So, as you kind of look across the state cities, there's never, there's not really a typical mix that I can show you, but like, that is kind of, you know, what we would be looking for, is kind of just in... I would say that what we're seeing is not untypical for what I've seen recently.
Councilmember Mahoney, and then, is it, okay, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then, okay, and then, Councilmember Mahoney, and then, Councilmember Nutting. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, the one thing that really kind of strikes me is that we've got our three largest revenue pieces, sales tax, property tax, and utility taxes are all stable, and so, they're not going to change much in the, in the future, if I read this correctly, and yet, they're not keeping pace with inflation under any circumstances, and that's the ultimate problem that we're seeing, causing that trend line to curve down below what we want and going negative. Is that an accurate assessment?
Yes.
So, how do we fix that? Because we're a landlocked city, we don't have a lot of room to grow, we don't have, you know, we can't snap our fingers and create a whole lot more economic activity, and, you know, utility taxes are a little on the regressive side, because everybody needs utilities, so we don't want to overdo it on those, and as you say, we may be near our capacity, certainly on the, on the property tax and on the utility taxes.
That's really, you could either cut expenses, you have no choice other than to either cut expenses, or find additional revenues. And so, almost every city we're working in is dealing with this, this conundrum of how to grow, you know, with the same staff, you know, and provide the same level of service to the community without additional FTEs over time. That's certainly the challenge that most cities are dealing with. And as far as additional revenues go, yeah, the franchise fees might have a little bit of room. The, you know, if you had some high-value retail sales activity in the community, like a, an auto dealership or something like that, that certainly helps, you know, but it's hard to pick, you know, the businesses that generate the most revenue.
I think what I would, would add to that, Deputy Mayor, is that the second part of this presentation will talk about the relationship between land use choices and economics. That is definitely the long game, candidly, of, I mean, that is not something that changes overnight, so, I think I would say that that is going to be an important part of this presentation. And then, secondly, on the 25th, we will be bringing the council a menu of revenue-enhancing options. None of them are easy, and none of them will our residents not feel, but they are things that I would ask you for us to take a critical and open look at, because as you can see, you know, Todd and Luke showed the slide of what our trajectory is, and it's not positive. And so, we will need some kind of short-term solutions, even if the council looks at some long-term land use decisions.
And, just the last follow-up question that I wanted to ask is, the comprehensive growth plan and the requirements of that are that we grow at a certain rate, so we are expected to have more citizens in Des Moines, and there's an expense, when you have more citizens, you have, you know, more need for services. How is that factored in to the charts that you showed us in the increased growth, or increased in services that you factored in at about 4%?
Yeah, it, this is just a baseline forecast for the next six years, so it doesn't assume significant amounts of growth occur in either residential or non-residential, so, it's not really, we're not really talking about that in this presentation, but I think the development model that we're going to present in the next part does kind of begin to shed light on the benefits of certain types of growth.
And all that being said, I really appreciate the data, I really appreciate the presentation, because it makes us really take a look at what we need to be looking at, so, and I thought it was very well done, so, thank you very much, thank, I'm not trying to be negative here, but just trying to figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahoney, then Councilmember Nutting, then Councilmember Grace Matsui.
So, one of the big discussions, obviously very controversial at the state level, is to increase the cap on property taxes, say 2%, 3%. It'd be interesting to see, in this static model, what that might do, and when are, when we go zero negative, you might say. I'd kind of like to, if, when we do see the revenue opportunities, and maybe it is going to be on the 25th, it'd be interesting to see if those possibilities, however remote they might be, is there an option, or at least to offset some of the other choices we're going to have to make.
Councilmember Nutting?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm good at this time. My question's got answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui?
Thank you, I appreciate your presentation and how well it's laid out. I'm looking at the general fund revenue stability on Slide 7, and I wanted to ask a little bit more about, over the past 10 years, what counts as stable and what counts as an increase? Did we see any increases in the amount of business licenses and revenue collected from new businesses coming to Des Moines, from business and occupational tasks, and how that might feed into the reputation that the city has for business friendliness? So, we're, it says it's stable, does that mean zero growth in the amount of businesses that have come here in the last 10 years?
So, for clarification on that slide, historical stability is not necessarily measuring specifically a trend within the city, it's more of just how, how those revenues kind of typically grow over time. So, for example, business licenses and business occupation taxes, it's not necessarily a measure of like, how they were growing, it's more of, those generally will not be like, cut back, like, those don't, those don't decrease over time usually. And that's why, like, property taxes are labeled very stable, because they do always grow by that 1% each year, basically, plus any new construction, but there's never really a cutback in the total amount of property taxes you're receiving.
I had one more. I know that you have counseled many other jurisdictions in Western Washington. Can you comment also about where is population growth happening? Because we see that the city of Seattle finally hit 800,000 residents, and I know that there are other cities in this area that are seeing increased population, which can lead to increase in sales tax, increase in BNO possibly, increase in, in all sorts of revenue. Where is Des Moines in increasing our numbers of population in comparison?
I'm not sure that I have that data ready right now, but I can follow up and get back to you on that.
Anecdotally, as we work around the region, we do see a lot of growth in the outer ring, all the way from Everett, in Arlington to the north, and then, out to the east, North Bend and Sequoia, you know, those communities, Redmond, are definitely adding thousands of dwelling units. A lot of those communities are served by the Light Rail, you know, and they're getting ready to accommodate that transitory development. They've changed their zoning to accommodate mixed use, higher density, high-rise, I call them high-rises, compared to what they've been having. So, yeah, we do see a lot of that, you know, and I, this is still a wonderful community in terms of scale and size, and a lot of things about it that we love, and, but it seems like it's a little bit more mature in terms of the built-out nature of, of the community, the fabric, and so, your infill is going to be much more, I think, intermittent, and not, not like what we're seeing in those other cities.
Councilmember Harris?
Oh, it's mature, all right. And, yeah, I mean, this may be rhetorical, but your, your assumptions are based on maintaining qualitative and quantitative services over time, correct? I mean, that we're going to be providing the same stuff, you know? You know, you have the money you want, but the more painful analysis would be just defining what services we could provide over the next 10 years, because it's just, my experience has been that we cut services whether we plan to or not, and perhaps that could be, I guess what I'm trying to get at, like my previous question, I wonder if, if some other cities have taken a deliberative approach to saying, to redefining what services they provide? You know, you don't have to, some cities provide municipal services, and other cities, the same thing, don't. And is there a way, you know, if we wrote another check, is there a way to provide recommendations on that? Has anybody done any kind of qualitative comparisons for other cities on that sort of thing? And if the, if you don't, if the answer wasn't just, "you bet," then I think we're done, but I'm, to me, that should be part of the discussion at some point.
You're definitely thinking along the lines that you need to for the next step, in terms of, how can we provide a similar level of service at a less cost, if you will? Some cities look at privatization of certain services, like parks, you know, operating or maintenance activities within the city. I can't tell you whether that is really providing the same level of service over time, but that's what some do. Some do look at privatization or public-private projects, developments, as a way to generate ongoing land lease revenue from new development on city-owned assets, land, if you will. So, that, that could be one, one way to, to be creative there. But, yeah, it's really kind of, put all the ideas out there, and, you know, you're going to need to think through.
No, no, I'm not saying, this is not an ideological, or that it's like, idea, but I'm just wondering if, if there have been any kind of analyses of that sort of deal, because I just, this, we tend to do these sort of ad hoc things in response to the crisis du jour, and, and I, if there is a different way to think about it, anyway, thank you so much.
So, council, if we could... So, council, if we could continue moving forward and hold the next set of questions until we get to our Part 2 here? Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks again for taking the time to meet with us today. I'm Tim. I did your development impact model analysis. Oh, I have the clicker. Great. So for this analysis, we're looking a little bit more forward-looking and looking at more or less individual sites to get a sense for what kind of development the city might expect, what sorts of fiscal impacts those would have. So key objectives here that we considered were the value of redevelopment of vacant and underutilized parcels. As we've talked about already tonight, relatively built out in terms of vacant and part vacant parcels to develop, but there are a lot of redevelopment opportunities in the city. And to analyze the impacts of different types of developments. So we took a look at a number, and we'll get into that in a moment. And most importantly, provide a tool for staff to get a sense for what a development would do for the city. So when we're looking at a big impactful parcel, the city can take a look at, does mixed use make more sense? Does a commercial use make more sense? And what kind of impacts that would have on the bottom line? And so tonight, we'll discuss the assumptions and we'll review the draft findings for you. And we'll then take your feedback and integrate those into the model so that we can provide staff with something that's really useful to them. So, the development assumptions that we used to set out this model, we worked with staff to identify the development typologies that we're going to present to you today. So we went with mixed use, just straight-up multifamily, highway commercial, and then we used single-family detached as a method for sort of comparison to what you might see otherwise. And then evaluating those potential opportunities. So we're looking at different parcels right now, again, working with staff, identified, I think, like eight or nine parcels, eight parcels, to look at, to get a sense for, okay, what would a development look like on this one? We'll, we'll go over a couple of those examples in a moment. And just to give you a sense for what those different development typologies are, there on the top left, you're looking at the rendering for, I think it's the Highline 2 developments. That's closer to I-5 there, in conceptual stages, obviously. Top right there, you've got more, you know, sort of surface-level parked, multifamily. Bottom left there, a really nice-looking kind of highway commercial-type development. And then bottom right, you're looking at single-family detached. So, the way that we did this is to take a look at kind of existing developments in the city. So, we took a look at a number that staff provided us with. So, Highline Place 2, that's the new mixed-use development there, next to the school. Woodmont, which was more surface-level parked, multifamily, lower density than mixed-use development. Took a look at a couple of different highway commercial parcels because they vary so greatly in the city. So we took a look at the Walgreens that's on Pacific Highway, and then the new Burger King and Popeyes that's also on Pacific Highway. And then took a look at just kind of general single-family detached data for the city, mostly new. We were looking at, I think, those constructed in the last five years because that's probably what you'd see in new development. And then gathering key data from other sources, such as your population and household size from census. Took a look at your housing action plan, which was really helpful to determine the density of different residential styles. Assessed valuation and mil rates, mostly from King County Assessor, although some are MLS data in there. And then employment densities, those are more industry standards because that's a little harder to determine how many employees there are per thousand square feet of building space. Using your budget data, that Luke did such a good job of analyzing, we took three years of your budget data to get a sense for what a rolling average would be. Don't want to kind of look at outlier years and use those as our, sort of our baseline assumptions around, what's the cost of service to residential and commercial versus what are the revenues that we would expect to see from residential or commercial? We did some weighting there, and I won't bore you with the details there. But suffice to say, we were in there with, with staff quite a bit. Considering one-time and recurring revenues, so for instance, in a new development, you would have sales tax on the construction materials or your transportation impact fee versus your ongoing, your property taxes, you know, the other sorts of ongoing revenues that you would get from new development. We apply the appropriate escalators. So, looking at construction cost index, consumer price index, and different, different looks there. And then calculating the impact from different development types. So, what I'm going to do is give you a look at a couple of different sites that we looked at and run through the different development typologies to give you a sense of what, what we're seeing coming out of this model. So the first one that we took a look at was the Seascape property, otherwise known as the pit, which I absolutely love that euphemism. Pretty small parcel, about a half an acre, right near downtown. So really great candidate for redevelopment. Commercial zoning right now, taxable property value, pretty low, $624,000 for, you know, a pretty prime piece of real estate. And just to give you a sense, there's the aerial. So if the Google Maps version wasn't good enough. And so we'll go through four slides that look like this here, just to kind of go through the topline financial impact. So, you can see here, we, we've got the cost of serving this new mixed, we're starting off with mixed-use development, so that's residential on top, commercial on the bottom. The cost to serve that over 10 years is going to be about $841,000 versus the costs, or sorry, versus the revenue that you would get is $858,000. So you're, you're barely net positive on this mixed-use development. So, it's great to know that. Your net positive, $17,000 in general fund revenue over the course of 10 years. Awesome, maybe not exactly what you want to see, maybe not quite as much. But I will note that that is not including those one-time revenues that we're showing down there at the bottom. So you've got construction sales tax of about $179,000, and then your traffic impact fees there are pretty big, 279, pretty much $280,000. So, you got close to half a million dollars in one-time revenues from a development like this because we're assuming pretty dense development. And I think that that, that addition of the 7,600 square feet of commercial space is a big deal in this because we're seeing commercial really generating quite a bit. Your sales tax, not shocking there, but you've got employment-related benefits there too. And you can see, we've got about 50 or so apartments on that site. So squeezing in a lot of residential, which is great. But it's quite costly to serve people in the city and a little smattering of commercials. So that's great. Next, we're looking at surface-parked multifamily. So, less dense. You can see we got 17 apartments added there versus the 49 we were looking at with that mixed use, and no commercial to be spoken of. As a result, you've got a cost to serve of about $210,000 and revenue of about $150,000 over 10 years. So, net negative, close to $60,000 there. And this is pretty common. We do these models quite frequently around the Pacific Northwest. Serving residential is just more expensive, unfortunately true. I'm sure that, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads, so I feel like we know this. But as you can see, your one-time revenues there do bring you net positive. But on an ongoing basis, obviously, those, those one-time revenues don't come back and these expenses continue to go up. So, negative there. Highway commercial-style development, big winner, as you can see. And we're only adding 3,300 square feet of new commercial space. That's mostly because we're looking at some kind of unique parcels. We could see this being much more dense. So you could see these revenues be maybe two to three times what we're showing here. But trying to be conservative, we're going with the lower floor area ratio. Cost to serve, just under $100,000 there, so really not that much at all. And revenues on an ongoing basis over 10 years, $226,000, so pretty substantial. You can see those one-time revenues, not quite as much as we had with the mixed use, but still pretty substantial. So between that and your 10-year impact, you're looking at close to, you know, $300,000 of net positive. So again, you know, if we were zoning in an ideal way, maybe the council would consider more dense types of, you know, commercial zoning, especially in your downtown. And then finally, the single-family detached. Again, just purely as a method for comparison, pretty moderate, negative right there, $17,000, you know, compared to a couple that we've seen already. Only adding four new dwelling units, not surprising because we're looking at only a half an acre. And you can see that those, those costs to serve are a little higher than the cost, than the revenues. And the one-time revenues here, under $50,000, so pretty, pretty insubstantial. So between those four, you can kind of get a sense for what the data is showing us, which is, commercial's a big winner, right now residential, less so. And the way that you orient that residential, pretty important for you to consider. We did another analysis of a larger parcel, this one out on Pacific Highway. And you can see here, this one's across the street from the Fred Meyer there, just south of 252nd on Pacific Highway. Much larger parcel, five acres, so we're looking at a lot more area. And current taxable property value is $2 million. Now, this is different a little bit because we've got an existing commercial structure on here, but it's not used very much. So, you know, that taxable property value of $2 million for five acres in the Puget Sound is pretty crazy. And there's the aerial as well. So right now, you know, relatively underutilized. All you can see the building down there to the south. Your mixed use, again, we're looking at a net positive, although you'll notice that these costs and revenues are big. $7.5 million to serve it over 10 years, revenue of $7.55 million. So your net positive, $64,000 over 10 years. You are adding 400, basically 450 new dwelling units, which is about, you know, close to 1,000 new residents, a lot of people. And certainly important for you to house people, so that's good. And we're adding a ton of new commercial space there, 62,000 square feet, pretty substantial. And your one-time revenues there, you can see, are bonkers. I mean, we're talking $4.2 million. So, that's a, that's a big deal. Looking at more traditional highway commercial, and again, you know, this same situation as the last highway commercial example, you could probably see this be much more dense. But again, trying to be conservative and be reflective of the fact that a lot of parking is going to be needed for highway commercials, especially on Pacific Highway. Net positive of $1.1 million, big winner. Cost to serve, you know, $720,000, but $1.8 million in revenues. And still big one-time revenue gain there of basically $1.2 million. So, you're looking, you're looking pretty good there with that type of development. And again, if we were to say double this density, which I think is not a crazy thing to say, you're probably looking at more like a, you know, maybe $2.5 million of net positive. So, again, just depends on the way that you're zoning your, your commercial going forward. And we skipped the surface-level, surface-parked multifamily here just because we kind of wanted to save you time because we know what that's going to look like. But, single-family detached is the basis of comparison here. 33 units of housing added, so not that much. Cost to serve, $423,000. Revenue, $177,000. Net negative, 200, basically, you know, a quarter of a million dollars. One-time revenues here are pretty substantial comparatively to the last one. But again, that's, you know, less than half a million dollars on five acres. You're going to want more than that, I think. So the key findings from this are, I think, pretty obvious. Your mixed use is close to a wash. And I think the more that you can really leverage your use of commercial and your mixed use, that's going to be really beneficial. Surface-parked multifamily and single-family detached are really important because housing people is important. But you need to think hard about whether or not that's what you want to use your vacant space on. I'll note that what we talked about today was mostly vacant. So, you know, when we're looking at those redevelopment sites where there's an existing structure, it gets more complicated because you've got existing jobs, you've got existing buildings, you've got property values that already reflect improvement. Whereas all of these are pretty much, there's no improvement. So, all of the improvement value that comes on is all property tax net positive for you guys. So redevelopment gets, gets a little more complicated. But again, we'll provide staff with this model so that they get a sense for what that looks like on a case-by-case basis. Your one-time revenues are really significant. And, you know, as Todd mentioned earlier, you could see the benefit that you get out of your transportation impact fee. If you were to add other impact fees there, that obviously becomes much more impactful. So the next steps here is, we'll take your feedback. We'll obviously talk with staff after this meeting. We'll make some edits to the model, we'll provide it to them. They'll have a tool to use going forward. And we'll also write a guidebook so that that way we're not, you know, sticking them with something that they don't know how to use. So that's it for mine. Questions?
Council, so this has been a long presentation. What I'm going to ask is that you compile your questions, try and prioritize them. We'll go around one time. So everybody, everybody gets a shot at it. And, but before we begin, could you clarify what you mean by model? Is this going to be an app where there's data input and it pops something out for you? Or are you just talking about it?
It's an Excel spreadsheet, so it won't be an app. I'm not a developer like that. But yeah, it'll be, it's an Excel model where a lot of the background calculations are done, you know, using the formulas that we've created. And there will be a place for staff to input the particulars of a parcel where development is proposed, and the specifics of the development that's anticipated. So if we're looking at, you know, a two-acre parcel in downtown, they can enter all of the important data, like existing assessed value, buildable area, you know, kind of existing buildings, all that stuff, and then enter all of the, all of that data from the new development. So, you know, new units, new square feet of commercial. And the model will kind of automatically calculate. And yes, there's like a landing page where there's the 10-year graph of city revenues and expenses and one-time revenue box and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to start with Councilmember Mahoney, then Councilmember Nutting, and Deputy Mayor Steinmetz to begin. Go ahead.
So, I'm just going to give you everything right in one time. So, there's, there's what's reasonable versus what's best. Obviously downtown, I see, maybe it's not the net gain you see, but I see mixed use being the better choice there. I'd also be interested in heights, in particularly parts of town. The lot you chose was one of the ones given a height bonus nine, 10 years ago, and we're still waiting for it to be built. And the components of it, as far as businesses that you're talking about. Because retail's one thing, I'm in the retail business. It's, we're not expanding, we're contracting. Is it doctors' offices and those kind of things? I agree, the highway is, and we have a lot of empty lots in downtown and on the highway. The highways, heights are one thing. And that particular property brings up environmental and zoning. And maybe you could work with the city. I actually know the owner of that property tried to work, we tried to work with the city on that. But some environmental concerns there limited the amount of use in that property and some other complications. I believe there's some other lots that have those issues. In taking this analysis, I think we got to look at that.
Yeah.
That's what I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Nutting? We're not hearing you.
All right. Computer's not cooperating with me, thank you. Councilmember Mahoney brought up the same kind of questions, but I have several others. Height issues with the pit, you know, was that taken into consideration? I am in the business and 49 units on, with, with that kind of retail, it just doesn't seem like it was the same kind of height bonuses that were given to that property. I think there could be several more units on there. And so I wonder if that was taken into consideration. The properties on the highway, I've been a big proponent of, you know, changing our requirements for heights on the highway. So I'm wondering if that, if we take that into consideration in going to a higher, you know, maybe 100 feet instead of 45 or 55, I think is what we're at on the highway. And then, my final question is, is why wasn't Big Catch Plaza looked at as an opportunity for development? It's one of our bigger parcels that actually could go 55, 65, possibly larger than that, 65 feet would be the break-even for some sort of developer with retail down below. Why, why haven't you guys looked at that? With retail down below, uh, why, why haven't you guys looked at that parcel and made any recommendations for that? So, those are my questions and comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, I'll do my best to answer those questions. So, um, to the point of the property that you mentioned, um, we just had a, a baseline group, but we, we can add anything.
We can definitely look at that, Councilmember Nutting. There's fractured ownership on that tract, which you probably recall, um, which makes it a little more complicated. But we could absolutely run that with Tim after the fact. But I think there's two or three property owners on that, which makes it complicated.
And did you talk, talk about redevelopment costs, that you were going to be visiting that?
Yeah.
From, uh, and if I can make another comment, Mayor.
Go ahead.
There's two property owners, and I understand that. But, um, there are several projects that I've been on, um, with my profession, that have been several property owners and with the right developer that could, for lack of a better term, bully these people into selling that property and to move on. The, if, if we had the right people in place to solicit the right developer, it, it could happen. So, that, that's all I'm saying.
And, and just to quickly touch on, on this topic, um, the, the utility of this model will be that staff can enter any, any parcel that they want. So, um, you know, w- we'll, we'll do our best to, to add that soon so that you can see what these results would look like. But staff's free to use this in any way that they want to. So, that, that's certainly on the table. With respect to your questions about heights, um, point well taken about the density in the pit. Great, great to know, um, that we're kind of on track there. And, you know, generally speaking, height wasn't taken into consideration in these first sets, just because we're looking at, at kind of easy to, to translate, you know, using the, the comparable sites. That's sort of our, our North Star on this one. So, uh, but as this, as this goes on, we'll, we'll certainly make that more, you know, kind of complicated and capable of handling something like that, a more esoteric question like the one that you're bringing up. And I really appreciate that input.
Did you have a quick clarity, because, uh, Deputy Mayor Swain?
Thank you.
Okay. Quick clarity, then?
Councilmember Nutting, when you were referring to the Big Catch Plaza, were you referring to the more of the Dollar Tree area? Or, because we own the, we own Big Catch Plaza. So, we're using just the Big Catch Plaza's generic area, or were you specifically speaking about the?
It's, Councilmember Oxiter, it's, it's always been referred as Big Catch Plaza. But yes, to answer your question, it is the Dollar Tree, um, the laundromat, and everything that's attached to there. The, the old QFC.
Quick clarity?
Right, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because I was, I'm, I'm, want to make sure that I'm following you. But this is, these properties were selected to be an illustration of what could happen at any vacant property. It's, we're not suggesting that you go in and develop this specific property. These are just models.
That's correct.
And so, it could be, it point to an empty spot on the map. We're not talking about what we're going to zone a specific parcel. Am I following that correctly? Okay, so, specific details about each parcel really doesn't come into this. It's about what is the, uh, use, uh, for zoning, but also which would be more positive on the ledger if you were to zone it that way in the future. And I think there's also a very important detail here about a reliance on one-time fees and which model is the highest, which you get that one year. And you're forecasting which says that this type of, of, uh, uh, building use is a multi-year impact. So, you get a smaller amount of your one-time use fees if you do something like a commercial highway over your multifamily. But the 20-year forecast is higher for those designations than it is for just, you know, trying to get that big 4,000, $4 million example of one-time use fees, which is gone after you get it that one time.
You want to come up here and do the rest?
Oh, yes.
No, I'm just, so, what I'm going to ask you to do, is it wasn't that quick, so, take your turn. If you have any, you ca- take your turn, and then I'll do Deputy Mayor after you.
Sure, I just wanted to make sure I was following what we're trying to do with the model, and that we're not talking about developing specific parcels.
Correct. So, ke- go ahead and keep going. You don't have any questions after that?
No, that was my question.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, go ahead.
I, I think the, uh, Councilmember just stole some of my thunder there, which is, I, I understand this to be a model, not prescriptive parcel for these particular parcels.
Yep.
But something that we could use. But, um, my question is, the model is parcel-specific in the way it works, so it's applied to any particular parcel. Is there any way to factor in what increasing the density in an entire area might do to the economic activity in the area? So, that, would we get an increase, um, if we were to have a lot of mixed use in an area? So, everybody was walkable, and would that increase the economic activity to the point where we might get a better sales tax return on that? And is there any way to scale that up from a parcel level to, uh, a neighborhood or, or an area?
You're making me think, uh, on my feet, uh, which I appreciate. I think you could. It would take staff a bit of time to kind of gather all of the relevant parcel information and then apply the relevant building densities and that kind of thing. To your point about kind of the economic impact of walkability, I doubt we would be able to capture something that sort of ethereal. But, but the, the, the fiscal impact model would work, certainly. It would just be on a much larger scale.
Well, if there's, if there's any way to do that, that would be appreciated.
Sure, yeah.
To take back.
Great.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, outstanding. A couple of things regarding the model. I, you, you mentioned the cost, how costly it is to serve people. And any detail you can provide on how that's calculated, I would certainly appreciate. Because that, um, as you were speaking, I was thinking about, uh, how much more money we would make if we didn't have all these pesky people. But, um, it, it, because, see, the thing is, the PSRC, the whole raise on debt of this area, since they expanded the airport, because everything is about the airport, was making this area transit-oriented development. And they lean on us with the GMA all the time to build housing and to do all of this stuff, which you're saying, um, is, um, you know, not exactly a winner in terms of staying in business to serve the people that we're supposed to be. You see where I'm going with this? And so, I'm, you're pushing back against an ethos. I'm, I got, I'm being rhetorical at this, but it's, you can't square that circle. And, um, eh, eh, so, I'm just, thank you for bringing this forward. Because if we actually did all of the stuff that PSRC talks about, we'd have a, you know. And so, uh, I, just a couple other, like, things, not quite so rhetorical. It's one thing to talk about the pit, but, um, you know, the, the, it's more than an abstraction. The, uh, the acquisition challenges at that, or Big Catch, or any of that stuff. Is there any way, you can talk in the abstract about, well, if we just get the right developer and all of that other stuff. But, um, yeah, is there any way to, to quantify any of that discussion? And since you did that, um, I'll, I'll, I'll move on to the, to the next thing. Is there, uh, any way to quantify, to truly quantify the value of height? Because I've just been struck by how that seems to be the go-to solution. But the fact is, we have offered people opportunities in the past, and it wasn't the golden ticket. So, I, I would like to find out if that were, if really that does trigger something in, in terms of.
To answer.
So, uh, one thing I do need to, uh, interrupt really quickly. If we could be as brief as possible, we have several, uh, items of business, uh, coming up still, a public hearing, consent calendar, all those things. So, if we can consolidate our questions, thank you.
Of course. Thank you all, and, and don't hesitate to, you know, reach out to Catherine, give her more questions. I'm happy to do my best to answer them. So, thank you again for your time, um, best of luck.
Thank you, thank you. All right. And to the council, you have all of these slides in your packet. Now you've heard this, you can re-listen to it. If you've got detailed questions or input, you can write them into staff as well. Thank you so much, gentlemen. All right, next up, uh, new business item number two, pass to the city manager.
So, we are going to talk about a way we can reduce some costs right now. And that is a long-term lease for Stephen J. Underwood. So, our Public Works Director, Mike Slevin, is going to briefly go through a couple of slides. But then we have Darren Larson and Lee Larson from Perfect Game here, uh, to answer any. They also have a brief presentation about sort of the concept behind this. Tonight is not the lease before you, it's actually talking about the concept and getting your feedback. Mike, be brief.
All right, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to talk you a little bit about, uh, Perfect Game, um, and then Stephen J. Underwood Sports Complex. And so, let's go to the next slide here. So, uh, we're all aware of, of, of Stephen J. Underwood, um, Park or, or Fields. It's owned and operated by the City of Des Moines. Uh, it's three, uh, pretty nice baseball fields, a, a really nice, uh, playground there, and, and the restroom facilities and parking that support those facilities. Um, the operations and maintenance of these facilities, um, cost us in the range of about $100,000 a year. Sometimes it's more or less depending upon lighting concerns, or if, like, for this year, the Crows got the outfield, you know. So, it kind of happens. And, but, but post-COVID, these facilities have not seen a demand. And we've had cuts also within the city, um, in our, in our parks groups to be able to manage and operate these fields where we need to go. And so, the usage is not offsetting, uh, our O and M costs. Perfect Game USA is a national baseball tournament organizer. They're all over the country. They're going to speak in a couple of minutes here, and they could speak much more better about what they do. Um, and their regional, uh, representation is Northwest, uh, I forget what the S is for. Sports Center. Yeah, holding, holding LLC. Uh, and then, um, in July, uh, Perfect Game approached the city, um, and the City of Des Moines staff, and say if they have usage through their tournament system for our fields. So, they could basically program them. And they were wondering if we would be interested in, in entering into a lease agreement. So, we started speaking with them. They've done this with other, uh, other agencies. City of Everett comes to mind, I'm sure there's, there's more. So, we started talking about the possibilities of doing this, um, because it would save us some money and it would activate and use the fields better. If approved, the lease would transfer operations and maintenance of the fields to Perfect Game, who would program them for tournament use, um, the highest, best use of those facilities. Perfect Game would bring the fields back into tournament condition. They do a lot of different baseball fields. They, uh, they're going to revamp, um, not put turf down, but revamp the dirt and work on the outs, the backside of it. And then, they would take over those maintenance responsibilities after improving the fields. The city would maintain, uh, the hard structure still, the lighting, um, the existing bathrooms, the playground. Although there will be, the lease is still open, it's not perm- permanent yet. There could be some charges for restroom usage to offset our costs and things like that, so. That's what I've got. Come on up, you got, you got to talk about people and use.
You did everything I was going to say, so. No, I appreciate it. It's been fun talking with Catherine and, and, uh, Michael here on, on the project. Anyway, I'm Darren Larson with Perfect Game. Um, I can, I live in Puyallup, been here my whole life. I just happen to travel around the country doing this type of stuff with different cities and just private parks. And I probably personally redesigned or built infields on 50 different fields, uh, and mostly in Texas, a little bit in California. Um, we came up, my son's been running tournaments in Washington for 10 years. I kind of got it started, but I spent most of my time out of state. And so, I'm mostly doing that, that part of it now. So, we came in, talked to the City of Everett. Uh, we're getting ready to turf their fields, starting, permits just came in. We're going to start taking, we took over the maintenance in Jan- in January. How's this thing turn? I don't even know if I even need to, I don't even, not even know if I need to turn it, really. And so, it's, uh, but, so we took those over in, uh, in January. We're getting ready to turf those fields. The plan for Underwood is primarily to come in, recondition the fields, make them a little bit bigger than they are now, so we can accommodate more people. Right now, what happens in Washington for tournaments is you have all the Everett, Lynnwood, and then you have Tacoma and a little bit of Olympia. There's nothing really in the middle. And so, we, we have, uh, a lot of teams that would prefer just to come to this area from both areas. Like, I have a facility in Puyallup that has almost 1,000 kids at it. They drive to Everett probably every other weekend, okay? And then, the ones in Seattle, when there's nothing up there, they drive to Tacoma or Olympia, okay? It's only three fields, we're working on some more in the area. But it'd be nice to have those teams just be able to come here. So, roughly 350 teams per year, like, come to the three fields, which comes out to about 9,000, 9,500 families, um, through the year. These presentations aren't exactly my, uh, so. Again, this is that, Mike, we're going to, what we're going to do is come in, it's somewhere between $30,000 and $60,000 to redo the infields. It's at our cost, we, we'll take care of it. You guys have a great playground up there, we don't want to mess with that at all. That, that stays open, the city's still running that. We're just taking care of the three fields, um, and paying for the bathroom, cl- being cleaned and that, take that off your guys' plate. We run recreational leagues all over the country. We would still do here in, in the area, do some leagues during the week. I've seen some soccer being played on there when we drove in. We'd still continue doing those types of things for the kids. I kind of got into this based on the fact that, one, I was broke and couldn't afford it. And, two, the guys that were running the, the programs, they really weren't offering that much. So, I'm always trying to do a little bit more for what they're, what they're getting. And we would also offer a discount to all the residents in the area. And so, that way, the ones that are, they can't afford it, they'll have something to do during the summer, some camps and that during the summer. And we'll also bring in people from Puyallup and up north for different camps and that in the area, okay? It's kind of a meeting place here in Des Moines. You got something to say? No, I was ki- I was kidding, so.
I think that covers the high, do, I think we're open to taking questions, yeah.
All right, Councilmember Mahoney, then Councilmember Harris.
Three quick questions. You bring in teams from outside the general Puget Sound area that possibly might need lodging?
Yes, yes, for sure, so, correct.
No, it's good, because of the, my follow-up question was, is there ways to advertise Des Moines hotels?
I, I literally, I, I grew up here, I played football at, like, Highline and that when I was a kid. I honestly did not know you guys had the waterfront down here. I had no idea. I've been here my whole life. And so, we came to the meeting, we took the wrong dir- the wrong way, kind of came in that way. Very, I love the ci- love the city, lived down there, we drove around again today. I think the people outside of here would like to know there's a little bit more here than just on 99. And so, the people that are coming in from Lynnwood and Woodenville and stuff like that, it's easy in and out for them. So, we'd definitely be able to get them in. We have a lot of teams come down from Canada, and a lot of teams from Portland that come up for bigger events, and so.
So, there's ways we could partner with some of our restaurants and businesses, along with accommodations, that they could get informationally to possibly maybe bring us additional revenue?
When we, when we put this out, and we would do a press release going out, we would love to have some, like, photos of the waterfront, things like that, letting people know there's more here than what everybody thinks. And so, encourage them to come in more on it. And then, doesn't really have a concession at the field, so they're going to need to go. We'll have something there, but like, they'll need to go down to eat in the local restaurants. And I'm, they're going to go down the hill versus up, I would imagine.
Well, there's, there's both choices, and both are in Des Moines to some degree. It's just taking advantage of a great opportunity. Just on average, on a weekly tournament, right? You'd, I know you t- you gave us the ballpark number, but on average on a weekly, what are we talking in people? That's the, the participants plus their families.
Typically, 21 teams on three fields roughly, and each team is 20, 25 people on average, counting the players, so about 37.
Okay.
Because we do a lot of gate fees in other parts of the country, so I, all the numbers are like written in stones. Like, every team is, we know we're going to get 25 people paying gate at the, at the front entrance. We're not doing gate here, but like, they do 25 there. We know that it's $200 on a really bad concession they'll spend per team. And we know it's $400 on a really good concession for the weekend, per, actually per day, um, for the. And we know it's $400 on a really good concession for the weekend, actually per day, for the weekend.
Sounds about like 750 people, potential customers to our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, and then Deputy Mayor Simons.
Thank you. I hope in your presentation, just because we're kind of going from zero, except for, it would be good to show the public what a typical day is gonna look like. I mean, because they're used to, they're used to having like an event once in a blue moon, and the rest of the time essentially having, you know, this thing to themselves. So, I think it would be helpful if you could just provide the, you know, some sort of sense of what it's going to be on an ongoing basis. Because it'll be a change. I'm not saying it's bad or anything. It's like super cool. It's just, it will be noticeable.
One of the things I asked Catherine is, I'm like, we came in for a second and third look, and I'm like, this is a great playground, and like how we're set up, like, we, it needs bathrooms. Like, we're not really set up to come here and handle the bathrooms when they're doing the playground all day. So, we kind of talked to have that discussion. So, like, we wanted the bathrooms to be open all day. We wanted the playground to be fully usable during, whether we're having an event or it's just during the week. And so, we just, the fields will stay open unless we have scheduled event, like a practice or a league or tournaments on the weekend, it'll stay open. And we'll do a website link to where these people can see what the activities are going on at the park.
No, I'm even just talking about just, there'll be more traffic up and down 216th. And going into the parking, that people are not used to that at this point. So, just, you know, just saying this is going to become an ongoing deal and what it's gonna feel like.
I don't think it'll, I don't think it'll be worse than like the farmer's market.
Worse is not the word. I'm just saying it's just different. And so, anything that you can do, and when it's not in use, people are used to wandering around and playing with the geese and whatnot. And so, if, making it clear that they will still be able to wander around would be very nice. Thank you.
No, and we're all for all of that, so.
Yeah, I can feel it, and thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, you know, I've kind of often thought, at least recently, this is a tragically underused space, because it's a really nice field. And so, I appreciate the proposal to come in and make more use of that. Couple of things I think that would be really helpful are sort of defining hours. The neighbors around the area are gonna be concerned. I grew up across a canyon from a rec center that would have adult softball games going on until 11:00 PM at night, and it was loud. You know, so, some sense of trying to control that, so the impact on the neighborhoods, and I think this is part of what Councilmember Harris was trying to get at, is controlled and understandable and not, you know, so it's not going to be just more, 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 but only during these hours, and some sense of controlling that. Councilmember Mahoney kind of started to get to one of my big questions is, have you done any studies to sort of quantify how much economic impact a tournament over a weekend or week long can do or can bring to the area? We had the Regional Girl Softball World Series Tournament here, and, boy, it was a great event. There were lots of families coming through, but we have no idea how much money got spent in the area and, you know, whether they were, even if they stayed in the area, and our local hotels didn't get advertised. So, I'd like to see a little more quantification of what you, at least on a model basis, what you can bring to the community rather than, you know, good concessions or bad concessions, because we don't have any concessions there right now. And that would be very helpful and fully appreciating the positive impacts of this to the community.
So, yes, to answer the first question on the hours, typically during the week, it's 9:30-ish done, wrap up. We're not trying to really keep, once in a while, 10 o'clock, but typically 10 o'clock would be like a cutoff time during the week.
But that is something that we do. If it was an issue to make a hay hard cutoff at 9 o'clock because the neighbor across the field needs it, that's something we can do.
So, in that, in that range, we're pretty easy on that. The weekends, if I'm in Texas, we're playing till like 11:30, 12 o'clock at night. I mean, it's just what happens. On the West Coast, it's not. We start games in Texas at 9:00 PM on a Sunday. On the West Coast, we start at 6, 7 o'clock, usually the latest games, and so, we kind of adhere to that. And so, normally, he runs most of the tournaments up here. Normally, it's a 6 o'clock start on a Sunday. Saturday, we do play 8 o'clock games, sometimes start, go to 8:30. So, Saturday would be the longest day of the week during tournaments. Usually, it might be 11 o'clock at night on a Sunday, or on a Saturday, excuse me. On Sunday, usually we're out of there by 8, 9 o'clock is the goal. And then, on the economic, on the economic impact, I can get you the formulas on that. There's, we have all that stuff in-house. I just have to ask the right guy to get to it. And so, every, every person that comes into the park, they've got it already figured out on what they spend and what they spend on the community. And one of our guys that does all the visitor bureau stuff, they're in all those meetings with all the cities all the time, so they're having 30 meetings a weekend at those things, so. And Perfect Game is usually pretty popular at those meetings. And so, there's one just in Florida, a softball group we were bringing on. They tagged Perfect, they were being denied in multiple meetings, and then they tagged Perfect Game onto their name, and all of a sudden, they were full for the weekend. So, like, we're pretty popular nationally for that stuff, so. So, I can't get you guys, I'll get Catherine that information.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience tonight. I know it's been a long meeting so far. I do hope to hear more from our city leadership team and from your next presentation about the lease options about how open it will be to the local community. I saw some slides, but we went over it really quickly, but I would love to make sure that we have access and ongoing access for local groups, for young people, and then what kind of advantages they may get in having you there to do programming. So, that's something that I look forward to in our next presentation. But again, thank you for being here.
One of the things is, I'm all, everything I do is about partnership. And so, some people get a lease for five years and they're a bad partner, and so, I'm always looking for the renewal. So, we need to be getting along, and so, in order to get a renewal. And so, and then one of the, we do have a, you guys have a convenience clause in there to be able to claw back the park if it's not working out, which is popular in Washington for that. So, that's a benefit to you guys. So, that keeps us as good partners in general, so. And then, we've got, I've got 25 years' experience. When he was going to PLU, I had him working, he was running events in Texas from here at 20. And so, and we're doing, we do events where we bring kids in from all over the country into different cities, and he's been running that with the families and that since he was 21, 22. So, he does a good job with the parents. He's much more patient than I am, and so, he's the admin, he's the admin guy. And so, any other questions?
Councilmember Nutting.
Did it work this time? Okay. So, this is adult softball, and you're talking about moving the fences out, and yet, not.
What we're, what we're talking about doing is, the infield's right now are mainly for up to 12-year-olds, but the fences are for up to 14-year-olds. And so, we're gonna, we want to expand the infield grass back about 15 feet. And so, and then clean that all up, so the infield's can actually do like 13 and 14-year-olds. The fences will stay where they're at.
Okay. But we've been asked to doctor the fields up for
Little League.
Little League World Series type stuff. So, how does this change the ability for the Little League? I'm just thinking of our local people that use the fields for their tournaments. How is this gonna change that?
Literally, literally, I used to be on the board of Little League, and Little League is 200, 210-foot fences is the requirement. So, we're, your fence is already too far back anyway, so you have to bring in a temporary fence for those. The infield being slightly bigger isn't gonna affect anything they would do on Little League. They're really more worried about the outfield fences. And so, they'd still, we would still work in conjunction at their special events. Just like in Everett, we're investing quite a bit of money up there to turf the fields, and we have special days for them to be able to come in and work out, so they have something for the city. So, we would more than happy with, to work with the local groups and stuff.
Okay. That's perfect. That's good to know. Thank you.
Okay. And just in the financial impact segment of our packet, a pretty significant savings, having them. Very significant savings mentioned. Councilmember Oxaker.
Yes, thank you. Are we, are we discussing just the existing Stephen J. Underwood fields, or are we also anticipating use of the additional space?
The lease only contemplates the existing fields right now. And then, we're also, sorry, we're also retaining the baseball diamond at the Field House fully under the city.
Okay, but do you anticipate us entertaining a proposal or something for the additional space at Stephen J. Underwood?
We haven't talked about that, because I've actually heard different things from the council as to what they see the sports need being there. So, that's a conversation I think the council can have, but for now, this lease only contemplates those three baseball diamonds, and we don't even talk about the other land the city owns there.
Thank you.
How many more acres you got?
See, I'm like, don't talk about it, Gene.
I'll be, I'll, I spend my week, I get probably 15 calls a week about people trying to build fields. In my first hour, I tell them not to do it, and so, and try to talk them out of it. Once they are convinced they want to spend their money, then, okay, I'll do the, I'll help fill them up. And so, it's not, it's, when you're spending millions of dollars to do it, you're not, you're really not, it's not worth it. And so, and so, it's to build more, so.
Thank you.
All right. Looks like we're good on that. I thank you.
And then, to finish her question on the lease, it was, it was one five-year term with like two or three renewals on it, and so.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So, plan is to have to take the exception, all right. So, the schedule being the way it is tonight, we're changing the agenda up a little. We're still going to address everything, but in a little bit different order. So, right now, the council's going to dismiss to executive session for the purpose of, I needed to fill in these. I asked, for the purpose of what?
Labor negotiations?
For, for the purpose of labor negotiations, RCW 42.30.1404A. The session is expected to last for 15 minutes or until 8:37. Okay, till 8:37. All right. All right. The city council meeting is now called back to order. And we are now going to move to the consent calendar. So, could the city clerk please read our consent calendar?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, Redondo Beach condominium, public drainage easement. Item four, inter-local agreement with Midway Sewer District. Item five, draft ordinance 2562, citizens advisory board. Item seven, C-TAC stakeholder advisory roundtable position appointment. Item seven, citizens advisory board appointments. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
You're Councilmember Mahoney, do I have a second? Either one of you would be fine.
Yes.
Councilmember Grace Matsui for the second. Is there an item that a council member wishes to pull? All right. We'll now be considering the entire consent calendar. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And I cannot see the other two.
They can't.
I'm guessing that they. Harry, if you can hear me, are you a yea? And Councilmember Nunning, if you can hear me? Yea or an aye? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, can you hear me? Are you an aye for the consent calendar? You are muted.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Are you an aye for the consent calendar as read? Nothing pulled.
Aye.
And then, do we know if, do we have Councilmember Nunning joining us again?
If he's not present now.
Okay, so consent passes six, I don't know, we call it six zero? Okay. All right. I would like to welcome our new citizens advisory board members, Bill Lindscott, Jim Lampriello, Mackenzie Myers, and Allison Chapin. And also, welcome Barton DeLacy to the start. And that, he's also on our airport committee, which invites him to that seat on the start. So, welcome to our new members. Thank you so much. Next up, let's see, we have our public hearing. So, the purpose of this agenda item is for the council to hold a public hearing to consider passing a draft ordinance with regard to the comprehensive plan to a second meeting. So, I will now open the public hearing. And we'll begin with a staff presentation from our community development director, Rebecca Deming, and also Laura Tichico.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Today, we're finally here with the whole comprehensive plan. As we discussed at all of our previous meetings, the comprehensive plan is required to have a periodic update review every 10 years under the Growth Management Act, or GMA. This deadline was originally last December. The comprehensive plan has 11 elements, or 12 chapters, when you include that introduction. We have reviewed all the chapters at the different study sessions, and we're here today for the public hearing for the comp plan. The SEPA document was also published with a comment period that ended on August 28th. The comprehensive plan is a 20-year, high-level policy document intended to articulate our community's goals, objectives, and policies. The comprehensive plan's goals, objectives, and policies cannot be achieved without implementation measures such as regulations, incentives, and programs. For this update, we have provided you, you in the packet, a link to the redline chapters that include redlines from the 2015 comprehensive plan update, additional changes that have been made since the study session packets, which are additionally highlighted within those redlines. And those include those council-directed updates. As we mentioned at the previous meeting, there are some chapters that don't include full redlines, like the transportation element, and some of the sections within the park element. Although we have a slide for each element in this packet, we don't plan on going through every single slide of those major updates, since we've been through those at previous council meetings. However, we'll go through some slides specifically where there were some additional updates based on major changes that have happened since we've gone through them with you. This slide shows the history of the comp plan review with the council, both through committee, through the different committees, and committee as a whole, and at study sessions. It's a lot. I'm not going to go through them individually. And so, as I mentioned, we'll kind of skip straight through to transportation element here, which had some not-direct updates. So, I'll kind of open it. And so, this is where the transportation element, we had updates throughout the chapter that were directed by council to incorporate water transportation or ferry service within the text. But we didn't go through them one by one with you, so I thought we'd go through this a little more in-depth than the other chapters. So, here's where we brought taking the ferry in that purpose chapter. And as we mentioned, we had them highlighted, so. And then here, we had that sentence, "Due to the unique location of Des Moines along the Puget Sound and city-owned marina, the surrounding waterways can be utilized to move people and goods into and out of the city, supporting both recreational activities and emergency response efforts." And that was the main ad. But if there was any other areas you guys would like to see in this chapter, I'm happy to go through it. There were some few other.
Can you repeat that again? The purpose of the water, was it also commuting? Did we put commuting in that?
In that sentence?
I mean, did we just call it recreational and moving? Or did we put the word commuting in there?
Supporting both recreational activities and emergency response. It said move people for both goods. It said utilized to both move people and goods into and out of the city. And then, supporting both.
Okay.
Recreation and emergency response.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then we had another big chapter, a little further on. A paragraph, not chapter, I apologize. And that was down here. That just talks a little bit more about how we're well-positioned to enhance multimodal transportation by leveraging that surrounding waterway. And so, those are the big additions to this chapter that were, that we proposed language that you didn't directly see. So.
Good.
Okay, now, if I'll go back. Okay. And then, in the housing element, the housing element had additional changes based on commerce and PSRC review after it had gone to the council study session. In order to better comply with updated legislation, these included an updated policy related to racially disparate impacts, an additional explanation in the appendix on middle housing, emergency housing, and supportive housing.
Point of order. The word is disparate, right?
Disparate, yeah.
Just a clarification, Councilmember.
It acted like Adobe was updating, it wouldn't open. There it goes. Okay. And so, that was in the policies. So, this is the.
The city council meeting is now called back to order. And we are now going to move to the consent calendar. So could the city clerk please read our consent calendar?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, Redondo Beach condominium, public drainage easement. Item four, inter-local agreement with Midway Sewer District. Item five, draft ordinance 2562, Citizens Advisory Board. Item seven, C-Tax Stakeholder Advisory Roundtable Position Appointment. Item seven, Citizens Advisory Board Appointments. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
You're Councilmember Mahoney, do I have a second? Either one of you would be fine. Councilmember Grace Matsui for the second. Is there an item that a council member wishes to pull? All right. We'll now be considering the entire consent calendar. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And I cannot see the other two.
They can't.
I'm guessing that they... Harry, if you can hear me, are you a yea? And Councilmember Nunning, if you can hear me? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, can you hear me? Are you an aye for the consent calendar? You are muted.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Are you an aye for the consent calendar as read? Nothing pulled.
Aye.
And then do we know if... Do we have Councilmember Nunning joining us again?
If he's not present now.
Okay, so consent passes six... I don't know, we call it six zero? Okay. All right. I would like to welcome our new Citizens Advisory Board members, Bill Lindscott, Jim Lampriello, Mackenzie Myers, and Allison Chapin. And also welcome Barton DeLacy to the start. And that... He's also on our Airport Committee, which invites him to that seat on the start. So welcome to our new members. Thank you so much. Next up, let's see, we have our public hearing. So the purpose of this agenda item is for the council to hold a public hearing to consider passing a draft ordinance with regard to the comprehensive plan to a second meeting. So I will now open the public hearing. And we'll begin with a staff presentation from our Community Development Director,
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Today we're finally here with the whole comprehensive plan. As we discussed at all of our previous meetings, the comprehensive plan is required to have a periodic update review every 10 years under the Growth Management Act, or GMA. This deadline was originally last December. The comprehensive plan has 11 elements, or 12 chapters, when you include that introduction. We have reviewed all the chapters at the different study sessions, and we're here today for the public hearing for the comp plan. The SEPA document was also published with a comment period that ended on August 28th. The comprehensive plan is a 20-year, high-level policy document intended to articulate our community's goals, objectives, and policies. The comprehensive plan's goals, objectives, and policies cannot be achieved without implementation measures such as regulations, incentives, and programs. For this update, we have provided you in the packet a link to the redline chapters that include redlines from the 2015 comprehensive plan update, additional changes that have been made since the study session packets, which are additionally highlighted within those redlines. And those include those council-directed updates. As we mentioned at the previous meeting, there are some chapters that don't include full redlines, like the transportation element, and some of the sections within the park element. Although we have a slide for each element in this packet, we don't plan on going through every single slide of those major updates, since we've been through those at previous council meetings. However, we'll go through some slides specifically where there were some additional updates based on major changes that have happened since we've gone through them with you. This slide shows the history of the comp plan review with the council, both through committee, through the different committees, and committee as a whole, and at study sessions. It's a lot. I'm not going to go through them individually. And so, as I mentioned, we'll kind of skip straight through to transportation element here, which had some not-direct updates. So I'll kind of open it. And so this is where the transportation element, we had updates throughout the chapter that were directed by council to incorporate water transportation or ferry service within the text, but we didn't go through them one by one with you, so I thought we'd go through this a little more in-depth than the other chapters. So here's where we brought taking the ferry in that purpose chapter. And as we mentioned, we had them highlighted, so... And then here, we had that sentence, "Due to the unique location of Des Moines along the Puget Sound and city-owned marina, the surrounding waterways can be utilized to move people and goods into and out of the city, supporting both recreational activities and emergency response efforts." And that was the main ad. But if there was any other areas you guys would like to see in this chapter, I'm happy to go through it. There were some few other.
Can you repeat that again? The purpose of the water, was it also commuting? Did we put commuting in that?
In that sentence?
I mean, did we just call it recreational and moving... Or did we put the word commuting in there?
Supporting both recreational activities and emergency response. It said move people for both goods. It said utilized to both move people and goods into and out of the city. And then supporting both.
Okay.
Recreation and emergency response.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we had another big chapter, a little further on. A paragraph, not chapter, I apologize. And that was down here. That just talks a little bit more about how we're well-positioned to enhance multimodal transportation by leveraging that surrounding waterway. And so those are the big additions to this chapter that were... That we proposed language that you didn't directly see. So...
Good.
Okay, now if I'll go back. Okay. And then, in the housing element, the housing element had additional changes based on Commerce and PSRC review after it had gone to the council study session. In order to better comply with updated legislation, these included an updated policy related to racially disparate impacts, an additional explanation in the appendix on middle housing, emergency housing, and supportive housing.
The word is disparate, right?
Disparate, yeah.
Just a clarification, Councilmember.
It acted like Adobe was updating, it wouldn't open. There it goes. And so that was in the policies. So this is the policy that was added, that included document and recognize historic racially exclusive and discriminatory land use and housing practices consistent with local and regional fair housing reports and other resources through support and state planning grants. So this was matching the county-wide planning policies that Commerce mentioned that we were missing within our previous policies. So this was an added policy that you hadn't seen previously. And then additional ads are in these appendix. So here are references that were added to areas that include emergency and supportive housing, that were added to show where they can go within the city. We didn't add any new data, just within our existing code. It just shows where those are allowed. So we didn't change any policies, just showed... Just showed where they're allowed. So those are the changes that are in there. And then, those are the major updates. I'm happy to go over any other chapters, if there was anything else you saw within the document that you wanted to go over specifically. We did receive one comment letter that was forwarded to the council that did request a change in the land use map. And should the council choose to move forward with that amendment of the land use map, staff did prepare an amended map, Exhibit B, which I have prepared to put up, so that it was available to you, should you need to review it, to add to the draft ordinance. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's now time for public comment portion of the public hearing. Please keep your comments respectful, and please state your name and city of residence. If you come to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak. We did not receive it, did we? So we did receive... Some... One person signed up. So could you go... Come on up, Jonathan Boyer?
Boyer.
Boyer. Jonathan Boyer. Jonathan.
Hi, everybody. You can hear me okay? Three minutes, I'll condense my four-hour speech into three minutes for you, if that's okay. Hi, everybody, my name is Jonathan Boyer. I have the pleasure of being the executive director at Judson Park Retirement Community off of Marineview Drive, or as some people call us, the building next to the landmark. I know that's a touchy name. We've been in the Des Moines area for serving 60 years. We serve senior community. We're a nonprofit senior community with mixed use, offering housing services and health care. We serve about 320 residents. We're a full campus CCRC, so we have independent, assisted memory support, and skilled nursing all on one campus. And we are submitting to make zoning adjustments to the property just to the north of us. There are several parcels of land that we own that are single-family homes, and we're exploring the opportunity to expand those to institutional with the ability to do dual duplexes and a two- or three-story building, to be able to expand our care, to provide more services to residents in that area, to help complement the current community we already have. That's kind of the general idea I wanted to share. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who did not sign up to speak who wishes to speak? First call. Is there anyone who did not sign up to speak who wishes to speak? Second call. And third call, is there anyone who did not sign up to speak, public comment, wishes to speak? All right. So council, do you have any questions? Please, questions only. Councilmember Oskar, and then Councilmember Harris.
Yes, on the Judson rezone request, are we to understand that it's just one? There's just... It takes up all the property except for one in that block? And is there a reason why we wouldn't rezone the entire block rather than basically what we did up on... What's been done up on the highway? We have this sawtooth.
Normally, I would suggest you rezone all of them, but because of the unique zone of institutional campus is the reason that I would not suggest rezoning all of them, because it is such a unique zone made specifically for those types of uses. It's the fact that it is a single-family home and would stay that way, and it's up against other single-family zoning. There's no reason to. You have the choice to go either direction, but there's not a need, because it's still up adjacent to the same zoning.
Okay, but would it affect... How would it affect the single-family residents if we... If we did rezone it to also be institutional campus?
It could put them in a non-conforming situation and future... Future expansion and things like that, depending on which way the code goes.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. This is a bit awkward to me. I mean, it just...
Just a question, please.
When did... Do you know when the property was purchased by Judson? It appears there are like three corporations that own certain houses. Okay, let me put it this way. When did the city, I mean, become aware of the... This proposal?
We got the request... They asked us about it just before they wrote the letter.
Okay, I just... I went to the parcel viewer, and it looks like their tax... Their properties that are currently paying taxes and renting, are they renting?
That's correct. When we asked about it, it sounds like they're commercially renting it out, but that... When I looked up some of the tax information, they have owned it for a while, but we did not become aware of it.
Rebecca, it looks like he's available to answer, maybe with more specificity about when you bought it.
Is that appropriate for this just context?
Well, I think you can answer the question.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if you were asking me. The properties that we own, we've owned for a few decades. And Judson Park, over the years, when it started in the '60s, was a different organization that has grown. So the names you see is the same organization changed. You'll see Abhav Washington, Human Good of Washington. It's all the same company.
I'm...
Does that answer?
Don't take this... I'm just... This just seems like something...
No commentary, questions only, please. You'll have time for discussion.
Okay, you have answered my questions, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? I can't see if you have a hand up, council... Okay, there we go. No questions, deputy mayor? All right. I will now close the public hearing. Is there... Do I have a motion? Want to see it right here? Have they got it?
I move to pass draft ordinance 25-087 to a second reading on September 25th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
Oh, sorry, it should be 2025.
It should be.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It should be.
Twenty...
I apologize.
The 25 and the 24.
I think I have a second with Councilmember Grace Matsui. Move into discussion. Councilmember Harris.
I would, you know, I fully support taking it to a second reading, but not with that amendment. And I'm a bit dismayed that it sounds like it's being included, or is it... Or are we voting?
Right now, somebody can make a motion, which will probably happen.
Thank you.
All right. I am going to make that motion. So I move to direct staff to incorporate the Judson Park rezone request into the comprehensive plan.
Second.
And there's a second. So we have a secondary motion. Any discussion?
The discussion, all... There.
I'm in a... Councilmember Harris, I'm going to move to Councilmember Mahoney first.
I just... Judson's been a great partner in the community. They've owned these properties. They provide a good service. I frequent the location on a regular basis, and they do good work in the community. Yes, I understand we might lose a little bit of tax base as far as in a transition to a different type of operation, but it does serve a lot of our elderly in the community and looking for new ways to do that and taking advantage of a well-run organization. There's nothing wrong with it.
Do you have any other comments in the discussion? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. There's no question that, you know, Judson does great work and everything, but the problem with the comprehensive plans is that they're neither comprehensive or a plan. And this is... Should be the province of a planning commission. And it's a wonderful thing that we had FCS here tonight to be able to have a discussion as to how much land we want to allocate for various purposes. I can easily see supporting something like this after a certain amount of deliberation and just educating the public. But this is yet another ad hoc kind of a thing where... Forgive me, but I'm trying to make... I'm trying to make a point here that what happens is we have developers that buy stuff and then just assume that their amendments will be approved in short order. And it should be the case that these are things where you get community members around and have them talk about it and get everybody's buy-in before you change the character of a block. That's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Well, thank you. Well, I wanted to say, I know this has been a tremendous lift, and it's taken quite some time for us to get to this point, but I want to say that we also had the opportunity to look at this document as a group, line by line, over a series of open council meetings, which invited participation from anybody who wanted to come in and knew from our agenda that we were talking about specific chapters, and perhaps that there was one they wanted to talk about they could have. And so I wanted to commend the openness of this process and how transparent it has been. It has been in the past that we, you know, make a couple of changes and then call it done, and maybe you get presented with the plan over one meeting and you approve it the next meeting. And I think this really sort of shows how much deliberation, how much consideration, and how the council thinks about the land use and the future of our city in a way that's very visible to the public. And so I appreciate you taking the time and energy, and I know it was an enormous amount, to go over it line by line with us this whole time. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I do feel like it's a better document.
Are you speaking to the Judson Park?
No, I'm just talking about the comprehensive plan. Oh, yeah, yes.
You're in the middle of that.
That's right. Thank you.
So...
I'll save it.
Okay. So any other discussion on the Judson Park motion?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Oskar.
Okay, this has come to us... We have had all of this discussion, and there has been ample opportunity for the public to weigh in. Has any of the neighborhood been notified that we're talking about changing... We're changing the designation on this property?
And the... We notified the entire city of the entire comprehensive plan, which includes a possibility that it could include changes to land use. However, this will still need to go through a specific site rezone, which will get a specific notification for the rezone. This only includes a land use change, and they will still have to go through a specific rezone still, and that will include a specific notification. And that will still go through the process, and will come back to the council for a rezone. The comprehensive plan change is only allowed to be changed once a year, so if this doesn't get changed now, it will have to wait until the end of next year before it can be changed. So... But a rezone can come through the council at any time and has no time limitations like a comprehensive plan amendment does.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
I'm going to give everybody else a chance. Councilmember Harris, Councilmember... Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Point of order, who are you calling in first?
I'm calling on Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I mean, based upon that last comment, what is the legal import of including this in the comprehensive plan if it still has to go through the rezone process? Is, I guess, what are we accomplishing? And it certainly does, if we can't update it until another year.
It makes it so they do not have to wait for another year. If we're able to update it within the comprehensive plan now, it means that they can apply for their rezone and move forward with their project. If it is not approved by the council now, then they would have to wait over a year for the next comprehensive plan amendment time cycle in order to go through it with both the rezone and the comprehensive plan amendment before they can move forward with their project.
But this is not a final decision on this proposal under any circumstances, is it?
That's correct.
It just keeps the option open during the next year. Correct?
That's correct, essentially.
Thank you.
So I'll take my first turn, and then to Councilmember Harris. This just seems to make common sense to me. So they've owned the properties for a long time, and they have a mission that they're doing in the community. I appreciate them, so it just seems to make sense to me. So I'll be in favor. Councilmember Harris.
It is absolutely practical, but it is what the... I am telling you, it is exactly what the public despises about zoning. Okay? They... We did spend months and years, and you look at the map, and it's yellow, and it's purple, and it's green, and so forth, and you go through all of that jazz, and you go, aha, here we are. And then like four days before, it's like, wait, the yellow thing is now purple. So for the general public, they find it meaningless, because for... As a practical matter, you can basically just do stuff whenever you want. Okay? And the people at the Masonicome, they buy the thing, and they know it's zoned institutional, and I wonder how many minutes it will take before they apply to rezone it to some other purpose. That is what drives the public nuts, is that we assume that zoning gives you at least some basic certainty. And I would say this would also apply to short-term rentals and any other land use thing. It's just people want to have some basic notion as to what the rules are, and it feels too squishy to people. Just... Yeah, I mean, people will not understand that there are multiple levels to this, and don't worry about it here, because we can always catch it over there. Once the train gets moving, it's a fait accompli, and it's just... It's a mindset. I understand it's just something we do here with discretionary zoning, but it's not what the public understands, and it just creates an ongoing, real upset in the community. And to whatever extent we could do to make it just more straightforward, it would be a real improvement in local government. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
We're not trying to tuck people into bed here. We're just leaving options open. Let's take a vote.
All right. Any comments? Good? So we have a motion on the table, discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney and myself, all opposed, Councilmember Oskar and Councilmember Harris. So it passes 4-2. Now we're on the original motion to pass the ordinance to a second reading on September 25th. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Moving it forward, Deputy Mayor Stein... It's a 6-0. Okay, great. Thank you for your patience while I looked through my notes. It's been rearranged several times. We are now with a segment of the agenda under New Business and New Agenda Items for Consideration. You've heard the opening to this before. We only need three head nods. Are there any members who wish to propose new business for our future agenda? All right. So... So we are to councilmember reports, and we will begin with councilmember Harris, please. Brevity is magical. So.
Yeah, it's also the soul of wit. I wanted to thank the city manager for writing a letter concerning the tree cutting, and basically it's the flight corridor program, which used to be the flight corridor safety program. The people in Burien are finding out to their upset something that we have found here. The port has created an inventory of all of the trees it manages, starting in 2014, and it's only a surprise, a bit like this kind of a thing with zoning in that basically they comply with SEPA, I mean, to a fault. They tell people 30 days in advance when they're going to do this stuff, and they are justifiably flummoxed when they are doing exactly what they say they're going to do every year in these different phases. It's to a large extent our fault for not, for not keeping our eye on the ball, or, you know, so if we ask residents to, you know, keep your eye out for that 30-day notice, well, we should be doing the same regarding tree cutting. I will send a note to the city manager, the, in the past, they have shown a willingness to negotiate ongoing remediations. And it would be unfair to say that they are, you know, unwilling to even talk about it. They are, but we have to be willing to ask, and I'll send you a note on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ochsger.
For the sake of brevity, no report.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
I normally wouldn't wear a hat because I find it disrespectful, but in this particular case, I have close personal events with the 9/11 situation, so every year, and it happens to fall on this date, so I wear the hat to pay a, pay particular, I had, I had people I knew who were affected that worked in New York, and being a buyer at Nordstrom frequently, I happened to fly out the day before this occurred. But the first responders, both our police and fire, gave up their lives too, and along with a lot of these folks, and I think it's important, we need to remember. Today, where the mayor was bringing up the fact that some people weren't born, I actually was in a discussion today with a few of my coworkers, new young folks that had just come out of college, and they were not born when this happened, and they didn't understand what it did. Those of us that were, remember that no planes traveled for days. Many of my coworkers were stuck in New York and still are affected by what they saw that day. And I think it's important, next year will be the 25th anniversary of this, that we continue to remember that this was something where on American soil, on the, on the continental part of our USA, we were attacked, and it, it was something where we rebounded. It showed the strength of America, it showed the unity that right now we don't see. And if we could just remember a little bit of that as we move forward in the next few years, oh, that would be a much greater place to live, wouldn't it? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I have no report, thank you.
Thank you. Council, deputy mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, just briefly, there's, there's lots of stuff going on, and the council is going to be at the farmer's market on Saturday, and come talk to me about it, I'll tell you about it then. One thing that I do want to bring up is that the Des Moines Oktoberfest returns once again on September 20th and 21st at the, at the Quarter Deck, and of course, this is your opportunity to see me in later, Hosen. That's my report.
Well, I'm thoroughly enjoying the community, thoroughly enjoying the farmer's market, the last day's coming up, September 27th, hope you get down there. In some talks with King County council members, because there is still some interest in partnership with the county for a ferry, so as long as there's any interest at all, I'm going to be knocking on those doors until somebody just says, no, Tracy. And then we met with Representative Christine Reeves and Senator Orwell in the last couple weeks, and both of them are very favorable toward, support, and supportive of airport initiatives for this community, so appreciated that. I'm hoping for some great pumpkin spice lattes in the next month. All right, this concludes our meeting for this evening. Next meeting date will be September 25th, 2025, a regular city council meeting. Please remember to pick up after yourself on your way out. Councilmember Harris, would you like to take the closing motion?
You bet. I move to end this here meeting.
Do I have a second?
You do.
All right, councilmember Mahoney, all in favor?